I hereby call the Des Moines City Council Regular Meeting for June 1st to order, and with that, I'll have Councilmember Steinmetz lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. Let the record reflect that all seven councilmembers are present. Is there any correspondence?
No other correspondence, other than the ones already received by council.
Okay. It'll be time now for the public comment. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal, impertinent, and slanderous remarks, or become boisterous threatening or adversely abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You will have three minutes to speak. I understand we have an organization, King County, we have Waterland Pride, and we also have King County Library. Both of you will be afforded five minutes. With that, we'll start with the Waterland Pride Committee. You have the floor, and you have five minutes, should you choose to use those.
All right. Well, hello, council. Thank you so much for having us today. We're glad to be back. My name is Bree Davidson, and I have Ella Wagner here with me, and I promise not to make Ella speak, so I will hold myself to that. What we want to do is thank you so much for your support of Waterland Pride, and let you know and put on the record that Waterland Pride Weekend is coming up on June 9, 10, and 11. On the 9th, there will be a karaoke party at Kaihana. That should be a hoot. There is a Rainbow 5K on Saturday morning that is in conjunction with Park Run. So if anybody's had the opportunity to do Park Run, it will be Rainbow theme this time. We are doing a Champagne Toast at Marina Mercantile at 11:30 on Saturday. And then on Sunday, we have a Family Festival at the Des Moines United Methodist Church. And so I would like to invite our favorite pastor, Pastor Jeff, to come up and tell us more about the Family Festival.
Well, good evening, councilmembers and community members. It's good to be back with you this evening. As Bree said, I am the pastor at the Des Moines United Methodist Church, which, if you've been in Des Moines for any length of time, you know has a rich history here. Also, we've been a reconciling congregation since 2008, welcoming all persons with hospitality, generosity, and enthusiasm on their journey of faith, regardless of their age, physical condition, race, gender identity, sexual orientation, or class, supporting each other in our ministries to one another, the community, and to the world. A few months ago, I stood before you, and I spoke in favor of the Pride Proclamation, and I want to take this opportunity to both personally, on behalf of the church, to thank this council for adopting the proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month in Des Moines, and honoring the diversity of our community, especially those LGBTQIA+ members who call Des Moines home. Our church has been partnering with Waterland Pride since last fall, and in celebration of Pride Month, as Bree said, we're hosting a Family Fun Fest on Sunday, June 11th, beginning the day with a Pride worship at 10:00 a.m., followed by a family-friendly festival until 3:00 p.m. And on behalf of our church, and on behalf of Waterland Pride, I would like to extend an invitation to all of you to come and join us. I believe these are positive steps for our community, and I believe that when we recognize and we honor the unique diversity in our community, recognizing our common humanity, then we are better able to recognize and respect ways of being that are not necessarily our own, so that as we interact with others, we can build bridges of trust, respect, and understanding with one another in our beautiful community. Thank you.
And we also brought gifts for you, so we are going to present these. And we have T-shirts for the council to represent pride when you're out at the Family Festival and out on Pride Weekend. So, thank you all so much. We really appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
If I may, I know this is out of order, but I'd like to make a motion while the Pride is here, and that is to take $500 from the Hearts and Lines Fund and give it to the Pride folks to help offset the organizing costs and continuing outreach that they're giving to members of the community.
Okay. Do I have a second? I see a second from Councilmember Pennington. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxger, and myself, all those opposed, Councilmember Harris. Motion passed at 6:01, and I know you'll use the money wisely.
Thank you again. That was really kind.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the next one, and I made a mistake. I actually have to give the next gentleman five minutes as well. He says he won't need it, but this is the mayor of Enhamclaw, Jan Molenaro. It's a mouthful, man.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, city councilmembers. As your mayor mentioned, I'm Jan Molenaro, mayor of the city of Enhamclaw, but I'm here tonight as your Sound Cities Association president, and I would like to talk to you about three specific items to you this evening, all very good. But first of all, number one, I do want to thank the city of Des Moines for being a valued member, one out of 38 cities of Sound Cities Association. Your continued partnership is valued, and you have a voice in the region through SCA. Secondly, for some of you who haven't attended an SCA networking event, which we had one last night, and I do see a familiar face that was there last night, Tracy, I'm not going to name names, but... There will be several others that SCA is planning, and I do encourage each of you to attend for several different reasons. One is it's a great networking event. You get a chance to meet other electeds. You get a chance to meet business partners that are very valued with SCA. Their financial support allows us to do a lot of different things for the region. And so SCA values that, as well as being able to develop working relationships with both the electeds as well as with the partners. And third, and to conclude, I consider getting involved with all 27 different opportunities that SCA has, both with the various boards and commissions that we have the capability of appointing to. And I do know the mayor is part of one, and two councilmembers are a part, and you do have Councilmember Tracy doing an incredible job on the Board of Directors. She has just been outstanding, voicing her opinion, and it's very much appreciated. So there's some of the examples of those boards or commissions are the Regional Transit Committee, Puget Sound Regional Council, as well as the Affordable Housing, just to mention a few. And again, this is your opportunity to have an impact on the region, not to mention an impact for your city. So with that, I thank you for allowing me five minutes, but more importantly, I thank you for having this meeting start at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Moving on to Ms. Victoria Andrews.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone, and thank you for indulging me in another one-way communication with you on the subject of communication. It was the topic of the latest mayor's letter in current, and since you are engaged in meetings with the concert consultant right now, I know it continues to be top of mind, and I believe you are all committed to walk the talk. So, there are three communication issues I want to address tonight, and the first is the ferry. In no way is it your fault that it has been delayed. However, as soon as it was known that May 23rd was not going to be the start date, a sandwich board sign should have been placed at the dock where the ferry will be boarded, notifying the many Marina walkers and visitors, quote, "The ferry's arrival from San Francisco has been delayed. Please bear with us," unquote, or something to that effect. It should also have been given space on the quick links on the city's website homepage for people looking for it. Way back on March 12th, I spoke on the various things that a communications director could do to promote better communications. It is my fervent hope that one of the outcomes of Concert's communication plan for the city will be a strong recommendation to reinstall the position of communications director. You need a competent, experienced professional now more than ever, especially to mitigate gaffes that aren't your fault, or maybe that are, whatever, and give people confidence in the city's leadership. My second issue is the $25 million bond proposal tonight. I'm eager to hear the city manager's presentation, and I particularly want him to explain why he is asking you to move to waive the second reading required in your own council rules. The January 26 study session gave no financial or timeline information before council was asked to vote on, to approve the feasibility study. And now, for the first time, you're finally getting financial information that two councilmembers, and myself too, by the way, asked for back then, yet neither you nor the public are going to be given time to provide input or make changes. He may feel that you'll be fine with that because of his well-earned financial accomplishments, but it is fiscally irresponsible. Design and construction plans have yet to be seen. Doesn't this all feel too rushed to you? It sure does to me. The council majority consistently put their trust in the city manager because of his financial chops, but neither he nor his staff are infallible. Remember when one of you caught the recent discrepancy regarding this ferry costs and contract, 20 weeks, 24 weeks? I'm requesting that you ask for a study session before you vote, one that will give you and the public an opportunity to drill down, ask questions, and feel confident in the numbers and rationale. You need to do your due diligence and slow this down. Last, I want to thank the council for reinstituting the Citizens Advisory Committee. Our first meeting was energizing. The group is diverse. It looks like Des Moines, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone. It is a great first step in fostering public engagement, but what we need is a planning commission, which will truly give citizens a strong voice as your partners in checks and balances. I'll continue to advocate for it, but you are the ones who can make it happen. The question is, do you want that much communication? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Moving on to Ms. Martha Hamilton.
Hi. Great to see you again, council. Thank you, mayor. I am here to talk about housing, and I am here to ask for the city council's help. The housing action plan is amazing. What a great document that's been put together. What great information. And we do need a lot of entry points for housing in Des Moines, and I'm asking for assistance for individual property owners that want to be part of the solution. I happen to have a lot that's 18,000 square feet, and I happen to have an 840-square-foot house on that property. My lot coverage is about 12%. The current lot coverage in Des Moines, if you're going to build a big house, is 35%. What I'm asking is, could we consider actually allowing homeowners that have sewage, that have effective utilities and water, to put cottages on their home property, up to 35%? That doesn't increase the lot coverage for anyone that would put a big home with five bedrooms and five bathrooms. All it would be is allowing people to put individual small cottages there, backyard cottages, to create more middle housing, to create more lower-cost housing, and allow some of the homeowners to be part of the solution. I'm asking for help with scalability, that's the more cottages, to allow a wider array of housing, because right now, the traditional construction costs are so high that it almost prohibits backyard cottages, not only from the owner's perspective, but also from the person who wants to live there's perspective. I'd ask to ease setbacks and the space between the buildings to help to have more cottages, and to create a culture of yes in the planning department, with the council, with the inspectors, to really help homeowners to be able to be part of the solution. And I'd also ask to consider having an ombudsman, someone whose job it is to interface between the individuals in Des Moines and the people who are making the decisions on what can work and don't work, to really, again, help look for these points of light, these points where something can be done, that can be part of the solution. I actually spoke with a company today from Eugene, Oregon, that builds high-end, stick-built, high-quality, intended to be 50- to 70-year homes on wheels. These homes cost about half of what it would to build a backyard cottage. So again, I really request that you take a look at wider and broader options. I brought you a handout so you could remember what I said.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mr. Bill Bishop.
Thank you, mayor, and councilmembers. I want to, first of all, second what Ms. Andrews mentioned in regard to delaying your vote on the bonding ordinance this evening. I don't think it's appropriate to waive the second reading and move forward at this time. It's been too soon since we've even had the packet out, which I think has been out only a week or so, and we really don't have the kind of financial information that we should have, I think, in order to make this kind of decision of this magnitude. We don't have, I'm specifically addressing the issues related to the Marina and the steps and the Plaza or Promenade. It's been, I see in the packet, it's referred to both ways. So, in any case, we don't have the breakdown. We don't have specific plans, as the packet indicates. There aren't plans and specifications yet for those two projects, which are scheduled to cost about $10 million between the two of them. I understand that there was a graph or a drawing in the packet that dealt with the distribution of funds and the amounts and the sources, where the funds came from that are outside of this bond issue. It would have been helpful, I think, if we could know, the packet indicates that some of those things may expire before too long, if we let this pass very long. And so I think it would be helpful for us, for one thing, to know when those funds became available, whether they're grants or whatever they are, when they were granted, how long the funds have been available, and when those will expire, so we can evaluate that as part of our analysis in terms of what the cost might be in postponing this until there's a second reading. And I think there should also be a study session. There was a study session earlier this year having to do with the Marina development. It was very helpful. It gave everyone a chance to spend an evening here with just that issue in front of us all, rather than anything else. And so I think a study session, at least one, would be important here, and if not, more than that, maybe two. You're proposing, according to the ordinance that's attached, it looks like you're raising the indebtedness of the city by a factor of about four, if I'm reading it right. Presently, there's $6 million in obligations out there, and this would raise it by another $26 million. And so this is a significant financial commitment on the part of the city, and the taxpayers, and every other citizen here needs to understand how that's going to impact them. There's a one-time sales tax mentioned. I'm not exactly sure what a one-time sales tax means. I'm sure we'll find out, or somebody will tell me after this meeting. But in addition to the other revenues, which consist of mainly, it looks like, the income from the Marina that's generated, so I just, I wish there were more time put into this in more detail. Specifically, I wish, I wish we had plans and specifications for the improvements so that we could analyze the validity of those and their, and whether they're suitable for the city and approved, can be approved by the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Moving on to Ms. Felicia Wilson, and you have five minutes from the King County Library.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to address the council. My name is Felicia Wilson. I am the regional library manager for Soundview Region, which includes both Des Moines Libraries, Woodmont and Des Moines, and we have exciting news that we are expanding our hours beginning June 18th. Des Moines will go for a six-day, closed Sunday, operating schedule, and it will gain two more hours per week. Woodmont will go to a seven-day expanded hour schedule, and they are going from 45 to 54 hours per week. I've shared some of the programming that is coming up. This is the first day of summer reading club, and we're just excited that we're able to be open more so the public can use our libraries and services. I brought along Eric Matthews, who's our library and information services manager, and he's in charge of the librarians and their programs to speak to you also. So, Eric, if you...
Mayor Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Buxton, and members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Eric Matthews. Pronouns he/him, I'm the library and information services manager for the Woodmont and Des Moines libraries. I'd like to take the time to highlight some of the programs we have happening at our two branches. Like Felicia said, our all-ages summer reading program has started today, and with that, we offer a number of programs that allow children and teens to stay engaged in learning and community throughout the summer, such as at Woodmont on June 27th, we have a samba 2K percussion workshop, and on August 31st, a performance at the Des Moines Library by the group Talal Okun, both of which provide interactive and engaging exploration of music and culture. On July 20th, there are two programs at the Des Moines Library in partnership with the Museum of Flight on rockets. At the Woodmont Library in March, we welcomed a new teen services librarian, Sandra Rosa Bryant. I'd like to note that Sandra Rosa is this year's Washington Library Association's Children and Youth Services Visionary Award recipient, and we are seeing why she was so deserving of that award. In addition to providing a tween and teen hangout time, Sandra Rosa creates programs such as Armchair Travel that encourages and engages participants in conversation and learning about new countries and cultures each month through travel vlogs, documentaries, films, and books, such as The Countries of Qatar, which is what they'll be exploring for the month of June. The Woodmont Library also utilizes the Community Garden in partnerships with the South King Tool Library, Tilt Alliance, and Master Gardeners Association to provide programming revolving around growing your own food and supporting our local ecosystem. And of course, the Woodmont Library also has a seed library, thanks to the Friends of the Library, where patrons can come and get free seeds to start their own vegetable garden. I'd also like to take the opportunity to express our appreciation for the amazing partnership we have with community service officer, Tanya Seaberry. In coordination with Susie Gonzalez-Puschner, our homelessness outreach specialist at KCLS, we have hosted seven successful resource fairs between the Des Moines and Woodmont libraries for our community members experiencing homelessness, to get connected with services and providers. A total of 173 unhoused folks have had the opportunity to apply for resources, such as coordinated entry for housing, medical benefits, food benefits, free phones and shelter beds, as well as additional resources and services provided by our community partners like Hope Link, the Salvation Army Street Team, the Union Gospel Mission, multi-service center, and Molina Medical, just to name a few. And we're also able to provide 19 unhoused neighbors the opportunity to take a hot shower. We look forward to continuing and strengthening our relationship and appreciate engaging in this work alongside Tanya. We have a lot more going on at our libraries, and we look forward to seeing you in our branches. Thank you very much.
And the last thing I wanted to add is, you haven't made it to the Federal Way Maker Space, please take the opportunity to go there. There's some amazing programming happening for, from young kids to adults and seniors. So, Federal Way Maker Space program has some great programs, and we would love for you to take the opportunity to come and see those. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for both of your work. Appreciate what you do for the community. All right. Now I'm going to turn over the floor to our city manager, Michael Mathias. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. This is relatively brief. The first thing I'd like to do is call our police chief, Ken Thomas, up to the podium. And this is more fun in public than when he comes in my office and we do one-on-ones, but I have the opportunity to, we're going to be losing our chief at the end of June, and we're in the process of going through a selection process for a new chief. But Ken has some great news for us, but I just want to point out that what he's about to describe is both a function of his remarkable leadership at the police department, and also his management skills and his success in managing our police department, and for really setting Des Moines apart relative to our ability to engage in law enforcement and engage in mental health services for people that need those, and avoiding the police being the intervention of last resort with people that need social services, be it from addiction, or homelessness, or domestic violence, or any of those different aspects. And so Ken has mastered that concept, and other departments call on us and call on Ken to learn how we did it, and what's our premises, and how do we divide resources, and what's our operational plans. All of that comes from Ken. So Ken, sadly, this may be one of the last times you address us, but it's a pleasure to have you here.
Well, thank you. Last week, we were in Spokane for the WASPIC conference, and our department received reaccreditation. So just briefly, just briefly, there's about 250 or so policies that we have to meet and then prove that we comply with them. And I think the really important part, and thank you for the kind words, Michael, but really, our team at the police department, our assistant chiefs and sergeants and officers, it really takes a team effort to put accreditation together. About 20% or less of all police departments and sheriff's offices in the state of Washington are accredited, and we've been accredited, we got reaccredited, and it's a pretty big deal to be an accredited agency. So really, it's because of our team at the police department, and most importantly, at the city, our city administration, our city council, the enormous support. Many agencies are not as fortunate as we are. I always say, gosh, I'm really lucky. It's almost embarrassing how much support I have from the city manager, the city council, and having a great police department and a great, even our union guys are great guys that we work with on labor management issues.
So Federal Way Maker Space Program has some great programs, and we would love for you to take the opportunity to come and see those. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for both of your work. Appreciate what you do for the community. All right. Now I'm going to turn over the floor to our City Manager, Michael Mathias. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This is relatively brief. The first thing I'd like to do is call our Police Chief, Ken Thomas, up to the podium. And this is more fun in public than when he comes in my office and we do one-on-ones, but I have the opportunity to, we're going to be losing our chief at the end of June, and we're in the process of going through a selection process for a new chief. But Ken has some great news for us, but I just want to point out that what he's about to describe is both a function of his remarkable leadership at the Police Department and also his management skills and his success in managing our Police Department, and for really setting Des Moines apart relative to our ability to engage in law enforcement and engage in mental health services for people that need those, and avoiding the police being the intervention of last resort with people that need social services, be it from addiction or homelessness or domestic violence or any of those different aspects. And so Ken has mastered that concept, and other departments call on us and call on Ken to learn how we did it and what's our premises, and how do we divide resources, and what's our operational plans. All of that comes from Ken. So Ken, sadly, this may be one of the last times you address us, but it's a pleasure to have you here.
Well, thank you. Last week, we were in Spokane for the WASPIC conference, and our department received reaccreditation. So just briefly, just briefly, there's about 250 or so policies that we have to meet and then prove that we comply with them. And I think the really important part, and thank you for the kind words, Michael, but really, our team at the Police Department, our Assistant Chiefs and Sergeants and Officers, it really takes a team effort to put accreditation together. About 20% or less of all Police Departments and Sheriff's Offices in the state of Washington are accredited, and we've been accredited, we got reaccredited, and it's a pretty big deal to be an accredited agency. So really, it's because of our team at the Police Department and most importantly, at the city, our city administration, our city council, the enormous support. Many agencies are not as fortunate as we are. I always say, gosh, I'm really lucky. It's almost embarrassing how much support I have from the City Manager, the City Council, and having a great Police Department and a great, even our union guys are great guys that we work with on labor management issues. So we are in a good position. Next week, I believe the City Manager is going to pick a really good Police Chief. We have three very highly qualified candidates, and I believe that no matter which one gets the nod, we're going to be in great shape. So I'm very happy. I wanted to be sure, I've been here over five years now, and I want to be sure that the Police Department is better than when I came here, and the push is going to be to have it be even better in the future. So I think we're in great shape, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to...
Next is going to be a finance issue, and it's not that the Police Department has taken an unfair share of resources. No, just kidding. But no, it's really a pleasure. We have Jeff Friend here in the audience, who will be involved with our bond discussion in a minute. But I want to relay that for the fifth year in a row, the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded Des Moines an Award of Excellence for the preparation of our annual financial reporting. So Jeff, thank you for your efforts with that. You have an incredible team working on behalf of the city and doing a great job in getting national acknowledgement. So thank you. And finally, this was discussed earlier, wish I could pull a rabbit out of a hat, want to give you a ferry update. And what's going on with the ferry is that it's still in San Francisco. There were three factors that have prevented its passage up the coast. The first was some unseasonably bad weather for a long period of time, starting in about April. Now, a high, you know, pressure zone has formed along the coast, so that's kind of cleared up some of the weather issues. But at the same time, there were two other things going on with the ferry. One was that they needed some extra parts, so that took time for them to be imported. And then the third, the third thing was that they had to schedule sea bearing inspections with the Coast Guard. And so it was difficult to get on the docket for the Coast Guard. But all of that's been taken care of. So we anticipate that in the next couple of days, they will start moving up the coast, and we'll try to keep, you know, everyone informed. I think we can put some information on our website. This has been a day-to-day occurrence. We call them daily. We get updates daily. We're incredibly distressed that there's been a delay, but in terms of dealing with navigation, dealing with maritime issues, there's a lot of uncertainty. And so we are suffering kind of the result of that uncertainty, but we, but it's our goal to get that implemented and online as quickly as we can. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my report. I will add that the boat from San Francisco is quite a unique vessel, and our residents will really enjoy it, so it should be worth the wait.
If I may, I have a question regarding...
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's, for questions for the ferry and so forth, to the City Manager?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Harris, you have...
I just wanted to know, previously, we were told that the end date would be September the 23rd, but it sounded like a 120-day window, so is that still a hard stop at September the 23rd, or will it move forward to fulfill 120 days?
Yeah, to be accurate, it actually was misinterpreted by one of our council members to be October 23rd, but in fact, the 23 referred to the year. So the idea was that there's a 20-week term contract, which will not be realized. So it'll be renegotiated down based on the availability, when the ferry service starts, and what the appropriate end date is. The end date may not change for, I think, the first week in October, but the start date will change. So we will get, you know, recap, recoup whatever expenditures were identified in that contract originally.
Yeah, no, I was just, just for the public, just to get a sense of when the end date was. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Will the City Clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning, intersex, and asexual, aromantic, agender communities, LGBTQIA+ proclamation. Item four, amendment number three, Vera mobility speed cameras, and that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Of a second. Councilmember Pennington is second. Is there any council member that wishes to pull an item? Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Item four, I believe, the speed camera.
Okay. We'll be voting on items one, two, and three. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Vote is unanimous. All right. Let me, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas, the city of Des Moines recognizes that one of its greatest strengths is the diversity of its residents and citizens. And whereas, members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning, intersex, and asexual, aromantic, agender communities, and also known as the LGBTQIA+ contribute to our community's success and strength in great numbers of immeasurable ways. And whereas, the city of Des Moines must proactively ensure that the act of, acts of discrimination and hatred will not be tolerated. And whereas, the LGBTQIA+ community continues to be a target of violence, harassment, and discrimination by many, and yet continues to thrive through the efforts of the community itself and through the support of the LGBTQIA+, affirming spaces, agencies, and individual allies. And whereas, while nationwide trends continue to highlight the targeting and discriminate against members of the LGBTQIA+ community, Washington State continues to lead in affirming the lives and the values of the LGBTQIA+ individuals. And whereas, LGBTQIA+ Washingtonians invite all people to join them during the month of June in celebrating the resiliency of the community, and I'm going to say particularly to the ones who live in Des Moines. Now, therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims June LGBTQIA+ Pride Month and encourage all people in our state and in our city to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equal protection under law, and further encourage people to join us in eliminating discriminatory policies and practices toward any culture, race, or group. Sign this first day of June 2022. And I'd like you guys to come up to the front, and we have, we'll take a photo, and we have some special pinning we'd like to do for you. Deputy Mayor Buxton, could you join me, please? Come on up right up here.
Councilmember Harris, you have the floor on item four, the Vera Mobility Speed Cameras.
Thank you. I requested but did not receive a results of, it's, the packet item says there was a speed study done. Was that in fact done? And if so, yeah, yeah, was it done? What was the result?
Yes, a speed study was done. I believe I've talked about that once before, but they initially do a two-day study, and I asked for a four-day study at four different locations.
I mean, I was just looking for the piece of paper. I mean, does it have, you know, like the num, I mean, does it estimate the number of tickets that would be written, or just how does that work?
Well, it had some speed, numbers of vehicles that went through, and then numbers of vehicles that went through at 31 miles an hour, and the speed limit's 25. And I had asked that it be a different number for, we'd give them four miles an hour over the speed limit, and if they were going five miles an hour over, at 30 is where I wanted the number, but they gave the number at 31. And I can tell you, the locations, it just in four days, there were over 2,000 violations of people speeding over the speed limit of 31 miles an hour. So there is more than enough evidence in the speed study to show the need for speed cameras in our Redondo community.
Is it possible for the council to get a hard copy of that? Just, I'm just curious. I've never seen what they actually look like.
Well, I can try to dig it up. I wrote some notes on it, on what I have, because I've been talking with the company back and forth two times today by email and telephone and several times a week, so I could try to track it down. They, they were not able to give me the numbers at 30 miles an hour over the speed limit because it was sent out to a vendor. So the study we have certainly shows that there's enough to support the speed camera project, but when I tried to get the numbers backwards, that's where it became a mess. But it's gone through the process.
So my other question is, so we're talking four cameras, right? They're only a couple of blocks apart. How come, like, why those particular spots? You know, I mean, how is that determined? Or is that...
Well, we did a speed study at four different locations to determine which areas were the most impacted. So at the end of the day, there's only going to be two different locations that are going to be covered under the speed study because we did four locations initially to find those locations that had the most need.
Yeah, no, I get it. It's just that they're only like, and again, I may not be, but it, it looks like they're only like three blocks apart, and I'm just, like, why is four, why are two locations better than one location, given that, you know, in other words, when you're in a school zone, I mean, you know, you have the one camera, or you have one at either end. I was just curious how that was...
So there's, oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
No, I'm done.
Yeah, so there's one set of cameras that cover Redondo Way South, or Redondo Beach Drive, one camera going in each direction. So that's two cameras for one location, and then Redondo Way coming down the hill or going up the hill, there's two cameras at one location, one camera for each lane of travel.
Okay, all right.
So really, there's only two locations that are being covered with this program.
And they're located on two different streets.
Located on two different streets, right. So you wouldn't be continuously...
No, I, I get that. I was just trying to get some clarification as to, you know, why having two relatively close together. So that's good. Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Roxiger?
Yes, do we have any timeframe for when these would be installed?
Well, it's going to be longer than I thought. I was hoping, true transparency here, I wanted them in by June 1st, and the reality is, there are going to be thousands and thousands of tickets that come from this process, and we need to make sure that we get it right, because the last thing we're going to want to do is to have to be refunding money or not getting it right. So that's one issue. And the other issue, unfortunately, the primary power to run the cameras is through Puget Power. And the experience of the company that puts these in, Vera Mobility, is that Puget Power is one of the most challenging companies to work with in a timely manner. So the person I'm working with is pretty sensitive because she knows how important this project is to the city, but we have to be realistic, and that is probably two months would be the soonest that we could get the power obtained through Puget Power. That's, that's our, our holdup. So it's...
So any of the permitting and any of the other, the installation of the pedestals, we could, we could do all of that before we actually have to hook the thing up?
Yes, we're going to be working on this thing full speed ahead. Tim, George has been part of emails and phone calls today, I have just today. We're working on this thing full speed ahead. Andrew, I think I saw him in here a little bit ago, Andrew's working on this from the permitting side and the installation side. So yes, this is a top priority, and we're doing everything within our power. It's, there are some things outside of our control that are slowing us down, and for that, quite frankly, I'm sorry, because my conversations with the company, our goal was to have these up and running by June, and it is not going to happen.
So will there be additional patrols then in the meantime?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're doing emphasis patrols as we speak, some coming up actually this week. So yes, it is a priority. And you may, you may see as we talk about Redondo, sorry, Harry, but we got a speed zone, or I'm sorry, a fire zone put in down where there was discussion about how can we manage some issues on Redondo Beach between 281st and 280th. And I got a little bit of report in the crowd, this, right as the meeting started, that it is having some positive effect so far, and it's working, so one more measure.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, Chief, just, just kind of wanted to check because you said thousands of tickets in the, in a relatively short study. How are we going, and I appreciate you wanting to get it right, because I think that's very important, both financially, from the city's standpoint, and also from, you know, the civil liberties angle of that. But how are we going to cope with that? What's the, what's the planned response for the personnel needed to simply process that many tickets?
Yeah, so that has been a discussion that we've been having internally and with the prosecutor's office and the courts. As you may know, this type of a program through using a park zone for the speed cameras, once all expenses are paid, then we split the proceeds 50/50 with the state. So part of the income from the tickets will go to pay for officer staff time to review the tickets, prosecutor's staff time, and court. That will all be taken out from those proceeds to pay for the operation of the program, and then the money will be sent off to the state. They're half the 50%. They're half the 50%.
Just a quick follow-up on that. As part of the contract with Veramobility, they do a lot of the processing. So they, once the officer approves the ticket, then they will mail it out and kind of handle that piece. We do get a lot of challenges to these types of tickets and with it being a new program, we're going to be anticipating a lot more. And you get some very creative defenses. But, you know, they're, they're new and they're novel and, you know, our office will have to defend against them. And so, yeah, there will definitely be impacts, but, you know, we'll be logging those hours and using money that's raised from this to offset some of that time.
And, and you think the money that's going to be raised is going to be sufficient to offset the staff time?
Based on the numbers we heard, yes. But yeah, and, 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 you know, th- those numbers will go down like we've seen in, in our red light enforcement, but that's good because that means people are slowing down. And so the numbers that we have seen though would definitely provide a large cushion over what, what would potentially be the cost.
Councilmember Harris, your second time.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinmetz kind of teed up what, I just remember when the, when the original red light cameras were installed, it, it was, there was a backlog at the court for a while. And so, you know, not trying to micromanage, but is there some kind of plan to sort of have temp staff or whatever in case just, you know, the first few weeks or months are a, it, it was just stunning how, how many cases there were initially and, and it created really a lot of, it's interesting.
And, and Councilmember, if I might add, at this point, it works seamlessly. So there is a learning curve and there is a challenge in the beginning and there is deficiencies that we'll try and realize as Tim and the chief both said, you know, try to utilize our manpower in the best way with the assistance of the company. And it will be difficult to start with as all things like this are, but they will smooth itself out and it will be like the red light cameras are currently that function very effectively and, and without much dispute.
And, and we'll get a very good idea in talking with the company today by state law in Washington State with any photo enforcement, you have to give a 30-day window before you can actually give the actual monetary ticket. You can send out warning tickets for that first 30 days. So that'll give us a really good idea early on what we're going to be up against where it won't impact us quite as much. And then we'll be able to catch up and adapt and, and be ready to move forward.
I want to remind everybody, the goal here is to create habits of adhering to the speed limit rather than becoming a hazard to the safety of our residents in Redondo. Yes, we'll make the money to cover for the needs and might be a little bit extra toward our police and so forth, but that is the main goal. The other thing I would like to offer is I do have a contact at PSE too that if we might talk a little bit later, I might be able to maybe shorten that time curve.
That would be great.
Mayor, if, one last comment, Chief, I appreciate this, that, you know, it's, it's important to remember that the model of our policing is not to punish people, but to achieve compliance with the law. And that's the underlying premise of all of this. So safety, compliance are the goals.
Councilmember Nutty.
I have one quick question, possibly two, and then I want to make the motion.
Okay, sir.
So, well, funds for this, I don't remember seeing it. Funds for this will go into the general fund?
I believe so, yeah. The 50% that's left over after it pays for the program each month.
And then it, during budget season, we could possibly reallocate that to go either into policing or in the court system if we decide to as council. Okay, just wanted to make that clear. And with that, I want to make the motion. I move to approve amendment three to the contract with Veramobility to provide the, provide for the installation and operation of speed zone cameras in appropriate areas in or adjacent to city parks.
Second. I have a second for Councilmember Pennington. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. I will now open the public hearing concerning the first reading of draft resolution 2303 relating to the City of Des Moines Housing Action Plan. With that, the staff will give a presentation, I guess by director, Community Development Director Denise Lathrop.
Mayor, maybe I'll just start to frame this a little. This item was brought to the City Council Economic Development Committee last week. We have Wayne here as well and Denise, our Community Development Director. And just kind of a little context for this presentation, the Housing Action Plan is part of our housing element, it's part of our comp plan update, which will take place next year. And this represents opportunities for the city to define its future. How do we go about providing appropriate housing? And I just, you know, a comment was made earlier about helping residents provide, you know, more affordable housing options. And that's, that's great, you know, and we want to find ways to do that, but we also need to remember that right off the top, when you start doing that, you're dealing with what are the traffic impacts, what are the school impacts, what are the utility impacts? So there's multiple, kind of a multiple dynamic to address that. So just, just the point being, it's complicated. But also, right now, local cities are somewhat under siege from external requirements. So we have the State of Washington, the legislature, just passing zoning requirements for cities depending on size to provide more housing and especially affordable housing. So that's typically always been a local control issue. It has now been expanded to the state. So the state is usurping some of the local control. The other thing is that Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2050 identifies Des Moines because of the light rail expansion within the city as a transit-oriented city where there's an expectation that we will provide more density and more housing units because of the light rail up at Highline and at 272nd and, and at Angle Lake, actually. And so another compliance factor, and I think that the, the sum total of that is something like 3,800 units across a number of years, but that's, so this Housing Action Plan, just to, to frame, is within the context of these external requirements. So we're trying to comply with what we're required to do and still retain the appropriate character of the city as to what we want to accomplish. So with that, Denise, I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for that introduction. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Denise Lathrop, Community Development Director. Let's see. I guess this, okay, for whatever reason, that's, okay. Great. So tonight, we will walk through the process real briefly. I know the council had a pretty thorough briefing last month, but for the benefit of the public hearing, we will do a brief overview of the HAP purpose and need and then we'll talk about the Housing Action Plan goals, policies, implementation strategies, and then there'll be an opportunity to discuss questions the council may have. I guess I'm going to have to have you page, sorry. Next slide, please. So as we had briefed council before, we had a very robust community outreach effort for this project. We briefed the council on May 4th. And then on May 12th, when we issued the public hearing notice, we also had our State Environmental Policy Act review and determination of nonsignificance and that opened up a 15-day comment period. That comment period closed on May 26th and contrary to what I had on that slide, we did receive five email comments. However, there were no specific comments related to the HAP document or the goals, policies and implementation items. The Snoqualmie Tribe did a comment that they had received the document and had no substantive comments. And then we had several individuals who commented about how the HAP would change the city's thinking about building codes to better serve family, families and future needs. And several individuals asked about housing resources that might be available to them. So we provided them links to the Skip website and King County Housing Authority and that. I will hand those letters off to the city clerk for the public record. Next slide, please. So as Michael mentioned, the purpose of the Housing Action Plan, it's really to serve as a strategic roadmap for the city to implement its housing goals and ensure that an equitable approach for creating and retaining housing that is affordable to all residents in the City of Des Moines at the different income levels. The Housing Action Plan included a housing needs assessment, our public engagement and then goals and strategies that we can implement over time. And this will provide some broader policy direction for when we are going to review and update our housing element in, as part of our periodic comprehensive plan update. And it will also include a review of our development regulations. And as Michael mentioned, there are several legislative changes that have come into play, the House Bill 1110, which was the middle housing bill. And then there was also an accessory dwelling unit bill. And so there's a lot of things that we will be looking at in terms of our development regs in order to meet those requirements. And that will happen to the extent we can. It will happen concurrently with our comprehensive plan update and we will still have a little bit about a six-month window after the comprehensive plan is adopted that we will be able to finalize some of those changes. Next slide, please. So with that, I am actually going to turn it over to our consultant, Wayne Carlson from AHBL. And he and Oscar from Echo Northwest did a great job supporting this effort to develop our plan. So Wayne, I'll hand that off.
Great, thank you. Many have seen this, this table before, but this is a summary of the, the Housing Needs Assessment. And as the, the city administrator indicated, there, there's a, going to be a, a plan within the, the comprehensive plan to accommodate 3,800 additional dwelling units by kind of virtue of the city's designation under Vision 2050 as a high-capacity transit community. And so what Echo Northwest did, and they, economists that have kind of looked at this as well as the, with respect to the demographics, has looked at how those 3,800 dwelling units, how, what, what, what groups do they need to, to service in order to accommodate the need within, within the city? And as you can see, there's a kind of a stratification, 030, 30 to 50, 50 to 80% AMI, 80 to 120% and then 120% plus. So there is a need for housing within all income demographics within the city and that, that essentially shows what those, what that breakdown looks like. Next slide. One of the things when we just wanted to kind of, kind of personalize, when, when we're talking about area median income, sometimes, you know, you can kind of get, your, your eyes can kind of glaze over, but what we're talking about are real people. So the 2022 King County area median income for a family of four is $134,600. And so as you can see, based on different types of jobs, th- this shows kind of what, what various folks, that, that might be a firefighter or a head cook or a, or a dental assistant or a preschool teacher might make. And just some of the challenges that those residents here within the city might have with respect to finding, to finding housing. And essentially what this shows also on that bottom axis is that 80% and above of a, area median income can often be, can often be satisfied through, through the, the market. But sometimes at less than 80% of AMI, there, there, there should, there, there may need to be some funding and/or incentives and some of those are what are recommended within the, the Housing Action Plan. Next slide. So the, the goals, policies and strategies, some of the things, just to, to kind of, just kind of mention for the, the record, the city can incorporate both private and public partnerships to accomplish its goals of implementing new affordable housing solutions. Just a reminder that the city doesn't directly produce or control housing, but policies, the development code and infrastructure investments certainly can influence the, the market. The community engagement analysis resulted in four major goals and objectives and five strategies for, for your consideration, which when implemented, these strategies would be intended to make it easier for current and future residents to live in the city with, with homes and costs that work for them. And the, the following strategies are potential solutions to, to meeting the housing needs within the city. So these were the, 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 the overall goals. So, and, and again, as Denise mentioned, this was, this plan is really kind of premised on, on kind of two, two things. The Housing Needs Assessment, which was a, an analysis, an economic analysis of the demographics and the existing housing stock and character, as well as significant public engagement. So improving access to housing, mitigating displacement, increasing the supply of housing and then fourth, supporting the preservation and creation of additional affordable housing. Next slide. So within each of those strategies, there, or each of the, excuse me, each of those goals that I just mentioned, there are a variety of strategies intended to, to implement those. And there is certainly overlap among the strategies and, but for instance, strategy one includes supporting and creating new partnerships to address affordable housing. That would be partnerships with other organizations, nonprofits, et cetera, King County Housing Authority, supporting the acquisition and preservation of income-restricted rental housing by housing providers. Third, amending the development code to support housing options. And again, as Denise indicated, some of this will be going on concurrently with the impending start of the, the periodic update of the comprehensive plan. Next slide. Removing regulatory barriers to the support, to support the development of a variety of housing types. And as the city administrator and Denise mentioned, the state has, i- is requiring some of that, you know, as we speak and, but there, there still is an ability for a local community to integrate that into its comprehensive plan. And then finally, reducing development costs for affordable housing. Next slide.
Oh, you can skip, you can skip over this one because I already walked through it. And then that really concludes our presentation. So we have a motion up here, which we were planning this to go to a second reading.
I have to follow the process. I can't take the motion yet. It is now time for the public comment portion of the public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak? No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Second time, is there anyone who?
For me.
Oh, for this particular subject?
Oh, no.
Yes, yeah, this, we, I'm sorry, we passed public comment. Is, second time, is there anyone who wishes to, who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Seeing none. Third and final time, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Seeing no one has signed up to speak. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Harris.
Well, it's more of a.
This, this is the question portion, sir.
Yeah, I, I have a question regarding the matrix, the five strategies. It's analogous to a question that, that the deputy mayor made at the last economic development. It's analogous to a question that the deputy mayor made at the last Economic Development Meeting. Strategy 3, amend the development code to support housing options. I guess, how does it, you don't have a check that it supports the preservation of affordable housing. And I just wonder how, it would seem to me that, you know, we have quite a lot of housing in town that would benefit from improved code. And, yeah, so.
Yeah, and I think in this situation, this table is really representing the strategies that best meet certain goals that have been identified. And so you may not get a checkbox for every one, but there's going to be, we see this as tools in the toolbox that we can use. And definitely, the displacement category, mitigating displacement, one of the strategies for mitigating displacement could be working with organizations like King County Housing Authority and that to enable housing to be retained, especially that middle housing that is considered affordable, especially in this King County, South King County region.
I guess what I'm getting at is, should one infer that the matrix, you know, the items that have four checks are to be preferred over the ones that only have two? Or is it just?
No, no. It's really meant as, these are strategies that could meet the intent of a specific goal. And so you may have a strategy that's much more geared to working for, with an affordable housing provider like King County Housing Authority that may not, it may help with the housing of unhoused people, or allowing people to get into housing resources versus the actual creation of housing, which might be driven more by amending our development regulations and streamlining that process, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Also, I'd just like to add, which I usually say this, is that it's really important in this context of creating affordable housing for people to really appreciate that substandard housing is not affordable housing. And simply because the rents are low, because the quality of the facility is declining, is not affordable housing. So this is designed to kind of go to a new level in terms of engagement with the private sector and investment. The city's not large enough, 32,000 people, to support affordable housing efforts through city money. But we are able to partner on multiple fronts with developers and private investors and so forth to accomplish affordable housing. That will be the mechanism. And one thing that's overlooked in the city, I really appreciate how this was done, was affordable housing associated with C-MAR. And that was an independent nonprofit who took that on. So those are the opportunities we're looking for. But it's really important to understand, substandard, below acceptable, does not equate to affordable housing. It's just simply the rents are low because the value of the house isn't, or the housing isn't worth more. That's not the answer for people with kids and families who need some support or some subsidy almost relative to affordable housing.
Well, let's go to Councilmember Steinmetz first, and then, go ahead.
Sure. Denise, and I don't know to the extent you've considered the interplay between the legislation that just passed and how that's going to affect, but I have some questions kind of surrounding that. In terms of ADUs, alternative dwelling units that are built on an existing piece of property, does the city have any authority to determine whether those are going to be sold off free simple, as a fee simple? Or are those going to be a rental unit? And can we direct it one way or the other?
Right now, we, they're really a rental unit on the property. And so as our code currently stands, but with the new, what I'll call ADU bill, there's a lot of changes that are being recommended by the state that we haven't had the opportunity to evaluate yet. But we will be doing that when we're looking at the housing element in our comprehensive plan. And what we will be doing too is looking at some of the strategies that we've identified in the Housing Action Plan as ways for us to navigate that and see about whether it's going to be a development regulation change, or it may be a mandate that we don't have a lot of leeway to control. And any of those code amendments would come before the city council for discussion and consideration.
Okay. And then just one more follow-up. The missing middle housing bill that passed, it just made a constant reference to lots. It didn't ever specify lot size. So as Ms. Hamilton brought up, she has a fairly large lot, and it would be easy for her to put another piece on that. There are neighborhoods where the lot sizes vary tremendously, and yet under this bill, as I understand it, there is no limit, there is no difference between what you could put on a half-acre lot versus the quarter-acre lot right next door. Is that accurate? And how can we, as a city, deal with some of those issues?
Yeah, that is another one we're trying to get our head around. I know other cities, like Seattle, has already been doing some of that. And so in a lot of areas where there's 5,000 square-foot lots, there are six units going on those 5,000 square-foot lots, and those are being sold to individual buyers. And so the way we are, the way we would typically do something currently through the short plat process or that, the state law is sort of overstepping that. So that is another piece that we are going to have to really delve in deeply to evaluate and see what, where we have flexibility to have more control, because we want to be able to look at ways that we can have the most control possible. And then, you know, if council wants to be more flexible, there's that option too. But it's definitely a lot of information. And every, all the cities, at least I meet with the King County Planning Directors, and we just received a briefing last week from Association of Washington Cities. And they're getting ready to publish just sort of an overview in their, I believe it was supposed to come out this week. But again, everybody is just trying to figure out what they're going to be doing next.
Thank you. Councilmember, if I may also. So as we've seen with the legislature, and as you well know, because I know your experience, is that when they establish a dramatic change, then usually the next session, you mop up all the things that aren't functional. And I think that having the president of SCA come tonight is great. I think the planning directors, along with Association of Washington Cities, Anthony's involvement, will be to identify what's functional, what can we actually do, and what needs to be addressed by a future legislative session. So I think we have some recourse as to implementation here, as we try to figure out the impacts on the city.
Okay. And I, you know, I have lots of great questions, but no answers. So, and I appreciate that we just don't know some of these yet. So I thank you for your candor.
So Deputy Mayor, did you raise your hand for questions?
Uh, no, just.
Okay. So then I had Councilmember Pennington next, and then I'm going to go, then we'll go back to you, Councilmember Harrison, unless another council member has a question before I go back to the second round. You did as well. I'll go, I'll go to Councilmember Pennington, then you, then myself.
So with the change in the state law and relative to the Housing Action Plan here, the auxiliary housing units, is there any, was there anything addressed in terms of utility infrastructure that needs to be upgraded to support that? And I think I recall it, maybe not in this particular law, but I think there was one a couple of years ago, where these auxiliary units are tax-exempt. Is that still true?
I don't know the answer to that, but as it relates to service and utility providers, that is something that we are going to have to analyze. Because what is going to change for us is our densities will change. And so we are going to be working closely, as part of our comp plan update anyway, we do a lot of outreach to all of our utility providers and public service providers. And so that is going to be one of the first things we do, is sort of identify all those stakeholders and understand where they have capacity issues. So then we can look and do sort of a gap analysis and understand where certain areas might develop more quickly because they have the infrastructure in place versus others. And to be honest, we've been planning for Vision, which is really focusing growth around high-capacity transit. And so I anticipate those will be the areas where we can accommodate that growth better. And for cities of our size, that was sort of the emphasis on, especially the middle housing bill, was, it was pulled in a little bit more to focus around the transit areas too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutty?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, for those, for those properties that are like 5,000 square foot, you, would notices, if they were going to put six dwelling units on a, on a property that was only 5,000 square foot, and it backs up to other homes with 5,000 square foot properties, would there be public notices placed like we do for commercial properties and stuff like that?
That is a great question. And I think when we are delving into the, those bills and implementation of those bills, that's going to be helpful. I believe that there is going to be some grant funding coming available through the Department of Commerce to help cities sort of navigate this. And there's going to be some resources through both Puget Sound Regional Council and Commerce. Because Puget Sound Regional Council, my understanding is they're pretty involved in the formation of these bills as well. And so I think they've been thinking about capacity and that. But the noticing piece, that's a really good question. And we'll take note of that so that we have that for the comp plan update.
Thank you.
Councilmember Oxegar, did you have?
Sure.
Okay.
So when are you expecting directive from the state as far as implementation of its new policies?
They are working on some model ordinances and development regulations. And so, again, when they briefed our group last week, they didn't have a lot of that in place yet. But I did understand that, that we should know probably in the next two weeks about some grant funding. And so that might help us a little more, help us better understand what types of things they're going to be providing support for. And again, we just haven't really had the time up until now to really delve deeply into those bills, other than the input we provided to Association of Washington Cities when it was going through the legislature. We, we expressed our concerns through Anthony Hemstad.
So I realize this is an action plan. Is there anything that you foresee that the legislature, interpretation or anything, can have an effect on the action plan itself? Or is the action plan, you know, sound, whatever they throw at us?
The action plan is sound. It's really more of a strategic roadmap that talks about the notion that there will be, there will need to be some code updates. Obviously, these were kind of wending their way through the adoption process with the state legislature, these, the legislation that we're kind of talking about this evening. But the deadline for compliance is June 30th of 2025. So there is a little bit of time, but the ideal is that we do it at the, concurrently with the comprehensive plan, so that it's done in a kind of, not a haphazard way.
Thank you.
I have two questions, and I'll go back to Councilmember Harris. So obviously, Councilmember Pennington had part of my question on utilities, because that's a concern here. But it's, the other part is the lack of utilities, in particularly the septic systems. Is there, what's the thought on how we're going to try to work with that issue?
I think when I was speaking about a gap analysis, I think that will, you know, I, what I sort of envision is like a big, a GIS map that shows sort of where service is currently provided in certain areas. And so you might have areas that are, like you said, are on septic, but you might also have areas that may not have the water, the right-sized water lines. And so that, that's our goal, working with the utility providers, because they always prepare their long-range capital facility plans. And so they also have, will be involved in doing some updates to capture these types of changes as well.
And my second question is, are we also going to be working with the school systems because of the fact that it's going to have impacts and maybe it adds additional students and so forth to the schools?
Yes, they would be considered in, as part of those service providers. We typically look, I mean, our capital facilities, utilities, and public service elements are schools, colleges, like Highline College, parks, recreation, and all of the different utility providers, including natural gas and power, and police and fire service.
Great. Okay, that was my last question. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor again for your second time.
Thank you. While I fiddle with the buttons. So I keep getting fascinated by this Strategy 3. And it says, "Review and explore simplifying residential zoning designations where similar housing types are allowed," or "will be allowed." And not to put you on the spot, but can you give me, for instance, how simplifying an existing zone would, yeah, how that might work? I'm just having trouble.
So we, I might not, we have, our zones for, like our single-family zones are residential single-family 4,000-square-foot lots. And then we have residential single-family 7,200-square-foot lots. And we have residential single-family 8,400, and I think it's 9,600. And so the middle housing bill, or the ADU and the middle housing bills sort of up in that, because they're basically saying that you're going to allow six units on a 7,200-square-foot lot, or four units on a 7,200-square-foot lot. And so we may, to simplify things, we may want to look at how that is going to impact our current zoning classifications.
So what I'm getting at is that, you know, the three things under Strategy 3 seem to be somewhat in tension with one another. The one that I quoted seems like, okay, you want to, you know, maintain a homogeneous kind of a look to a zone, but it sounds like the one goal or the missing middle is to create a heterogeneous kind of a deal. So that's kind of what I was getting at, is that, you know, you'd like to, like where I used to live, you'd have a duplex next to a couple of single-family homes and so forth. And that's become less common in Des Moines. And it, you know, is the goal to maintain homogeneity? Or is it to allow for more flexibility, is what I'm trying to get at?
Well, I think the middle housing bill is going to create a different feel, and the homogeneity is probably not going to be as predominant. And I think that's just the general outcome of trying to build, all over the region, of trying to accommodate more housing and meet our housing goals.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Oxegar?
Yes, I noticed in the responses that you had from the various service providers that the Highline School District responded, but did the Federal Way School District not respond?
Were you talking about for the community outreach? Were you talking about for the community outreach piece?
Right.
Oh, we did not get any comments from the school providers. We only received five comments on the State Environmental Policy Act review prior to the public hearing. And those were the ones I mentioned earlier, where we received a response from Snoqualmie Tribe and four individuals.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any more council questions? Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Buxton?
I move to pass draft Resolution 23-030 to a second reading on June 8th, 2023, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nutting is seconded. Any discussion before we take a vote? Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to make a few comments and a couple of observations and ask for some amendments. We were briefed, as you heard, last, last week during our Economic Development Committee meeting. And I've sat also for extended discussion regionally on some different tables about this. So I want to, I'm very impressed with the HBL. And huge thank you. It's a, an amazing document, and the outreach was incredible. My comments, key for me was the extensive, extensive community outreach in two languages, responding to our demographics. Also, each implementation recommended in the document is a consider, and that was, meaning the word consider, there's not a mandate here. It's a framework where the, over time, as we learn more about how the legislation is going to impact us, the council's going to be able to consider these options. Most of the strategies I noticed addressed the entire range of incomes in our community, which I greatly appreciate. It's just not focusing on like, under 80% AMI, or something like that. It recognizes both the response to the homelessness, homeless community, and affordable housing issues. And currently, just as a note, I've checked in every once in a while. Currently, no one that I understand is, in our community, has been turned away from shelter. We have been able to find shelter for everybody who has wanted it. So it's not a super emergent issue, but it's, we need to plan for the future. The document also appreciates and encourages our work in tech, in streamlining our processes. So I appreciated that. So I have four recommendations for edits that recognize our ongoing work and clarify our, the role of our Human Services Advisory Committee, and also our partners like Skip. So all four of those address that. Would you like me to give you word for word? I, I did send these recommendations already into Denise. Does the council need to prove the wording on each of these amendments? Okay, so page, so in your packet, on page 76, and it's page 34 of the HAP, my recommendation is to replace the word "develop" with "increase and maintain." So that, what that does is recognize that we have already been doing this work. And so I'll read the sentence. "It's important for the city to maintain and increase partnerships with organizations that provide programmatic and financial support," da, 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 da. The, the key there is "maintain and increase." I'd like to recommend that.
So let's make all of your, you had said you had four?
Okay, I do.
So let's make all four as a motion.
Okay.
At hearing the first, and then we'll take a vote on it.
Okay. Number two is on page 36 of the HAP. In your packet, it's on page 78. Strategy number one, I recommend the wording that says, "Continue to support and expand partnerships through our human services funding and regional collaborations like Skip that provide housing programs such as..." Then there's a list there. Page 85 of your packet, or 43 on the HAP, amend the wording to say, "In partnership with Skip, the city could explore a housing levy, et cetera." That has to do with funding, of possible funding stores in the future. And then the last, this portion of these is, the packet, page 87, or the HAP, page 45, I recommend, quote, "Continue to expand partnerships in providing housing programs and services to our residents, such as..." That one, it was just, it was a little bit confusing as to what Skip did or didn't do. So those are my four recommendations.
Okay. Do I have a second? As a motion?
I, I second.
Okay, second from Councilmember Nutting. Any comments before, comments or quick questions before I take a vote? Councilmember Oxegar, you raised your hand first, I believe, and then Councilmember Simonet?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to scroll down to find out which areas you were talking about. I was arriving right as you were finished. So it's rather difficult to determine exactly what, what we're changing.
So let me clarify this a little bit. My concern was, this is a published document, and that it reflects the work that we're also doing. And it's, and it clarifies the role of the Human Services Advisory Committee, and also that Skip is a partner. That Skip doesn't directly, it doesn't necessarily directly provide services in the city. So I do want to also say that I did vet these sentences with the HAP team already. And they concurred that these would be fine, but they said that it would, they recommended that I would bring them instead of the HAP team recommend these changes. So I did vet them, that that helps. Okay, go ahead.
Can I continue?
Yes, you may.
Okay, no, I, the problem is, is that by the time I was able to scroll to where you were talking about, I couldn't see exactly. So I've lost some of the context of what you're saying. So.
It's, it was fast. Would, what would you like help with?
Where was, where was one again?
Number one was on page 34 of the HAP, or page 76 of your packet.
So it's 34?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you're changing?
In the, I think it's the second paragraph, it just replaces the word with "develop" with "increase and maintain."
You say the second paragraph.
Number one.
It is important for the city?
Thank you. Yes, it is important for the city to develop.
And you want to change that, too?
Maintain and increase.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, point of order. I am still completely lost.
Okay.
I have no idea where we are, in what document.
Right.
Okay.
Two different pages. And I need a written copy of at least.
Okay, so what, how about this?
Sure, sure.
How about we make this a solution? This does go to a second reading. Maybe Deputy Mayor Buxton could forward those changes to us. We'll, we'll pass on the amendment for today, and then we can incorporate it into the second reading.
Okay.
Can I do that?
And that was important, that was also important for the, for example, if they were going to make the amendments or put edits in, I didn't want to task them with too much tonight, because they have to have it ready by tomorrow.
So I just checked with the city attorney. You, you can forward those to everybody for consideration, and we can make the amendment on the second reading next, next week.
Perfect.
Is that suitable for everybody? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so also, then I had two recommendations for strategy number four, both of them in regard to ADUs, and I will just include that.
Yeah, let's go, go ahead and provide those to the council and the city staff.
Okay.
For that, Councilmember Harris?
Would it be possible next week, or, and with regard to the rules?
Yeah, Councilmember Harris, I'm sorry, I really apologize. Could you, I need Deputy Mayor Buxton to rescind the motion for now.
Thank you. I rescind my motion.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I apologize.
Oh, did I move to make an amendment?
Yeah, you had a second.
Okay.
Because we were going to do the four lines together.
Got you. All right.
It's a little more chaotic than we thought it would, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
So along those lines, could we use some form of space technology next week to have the language on the big board, so we can all go through it, paragraph by paragraph?
On the specific changes she's recommending?
Well, on basically, you know, we've got this rules of procedure thing, and it just, Deputy Mayor, you know, I've, we've been on these regional things where it's just fairly common to bring up language on the big screen, and you scroll through it, so that everybody can.
I would say, I would say the exception would be, we can bring it up where there's points of, all of us do our homework, and there's points of consideration where we want to look at something, and somebody can call it out specifically. But as to go through page by page, isn't what we do.
And you put the thing up, you, you put the language up, and, and as people make amendments, you can just go up and down through it.
We'd like to do a little bit more efficiently than that. And I think her providing the information on the specific pages, everybody will be able to do their due diligence, and we should come to it. But, but it's not, the fact that they could be up there for the motion and it be prepared is absolutely a, a deal. Yes, that can be done.
Well.
But just on those particular changes, I'm not going to put everything up. I, I think that's unnecessary.
I, I think it should be also with the rules of procedure. I can defer that to.
Yeah, if you can call up, if you can call up other specifics, we'll bring them up. But in this case, it's, it's the floor in question right now, and the recommendations she's going to send to us in the next day. All right. So we already have, we have the motion, we, we had a motion to do a second reading, and, because the other one's been rescinded. And is there any further discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of motion one, moving this to a second reading on June 8th, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to new business. The City Council approval for issuance of a bond, 26 million, for Marina and Redondo Development, and the staff presentation by City Manager Michael Mathias for that approval. Here you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff Friend, our Finance Director, is here. He and I will share our presentation. We're also very pleased and glad to have accommodated you for this long. But we have Caitlin, who's the underwriter for KeyBank Capital Markets, who it's always a pleasure to work with. And then our Bond Counsel is Alice, and I'm not even going to try Alice, if I'm not mispronouncing the name. But at any rate, our, our Bond Counsel. And the two of them are just, you know, exemplary in their support for the city. So we're going to walk through a brief presentation. This has been a long time coming. Marina redevelopment has been discussed for, at least in, in my awareness, at least seven years. There was a significant interruption with COVID. This has been the result of multiple city councils and community meetings, and inputs, and discussions. And so we've arrived at the, arrived at the point that we can look how Marina redevelopment and some other very significant projects in the city can be financed. So the starting point, and I see Councilmember Bangs here, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Pennington, we're all here at the point, when I was appointed, and when I was appointed, and with that council, we were facing bankruptcy. And through incredible efforts by the council and the staff, working hard to make sure that our structural revenue was consistent with our structural expenditures, up to that point, it had not been that way. One-time monies were inappropriately used to try to balance the budget, and that works until you run out of one-time money. But when you have structural money, it's ongoing, and you can support certain things. So we had a lot of, we went through furloughs, we went through significant budget cuts, we went through a lot of discipline. We, we went through maintaining vacancies for longer than we may have wanted to, so the vacancies would roll up in, in revenue. And eventually got through it, and got through it so well, in fact, that the first thing was, we adopted, the, the fund balance at the time we started was approximately 3% to 4%. So that means we could accommodate payroll for less than one time. That situation the city was in. What we did was adopt the Government Finance Officer Association National Standards for Fund Balance, which is 16.67%. And we have been within 16.67% our fund balance as a portion of the general fund for the last six years. So that was a huge accomplishment, to get to the point where now we're solvent and we're safe. As a result of that, we went to Standard and Poor's, they do the, the ratings for bonds, kind of the, the standard of, of what the bond rating is. And we asked for a bond review. And they came up here and reviewed our finances, reviewed the situation as to what we were planning for the future, what the potential of the city was, what the growth was, what the dynamic of the city is in context of our region. And they, they went back to San Francisco, called us up, and said, "We're giving you a three-step bond upgrade," which is almost unheard of. And they gave us double A-plus rating. So the cost of money for the city is exceeding, is extremely reduced because of our high bond rating. The high bond rating implies that we're capable of paying off that. So there's assurance that we're able to, to pay off the bond in the future. So that helps with the bond rating. And then the other point to make, and I've heard it already mentioned once tonight, there will be no property tax proceeds used for debt payments. And someone asked what one-time sales tax is. One-time sales tax is, sales tax derived from, from development projects that exceed $15 million. This is a tax on materials for those proj, projects. Nothing to do with property tax, nothing to do with sales tax. You go buy a, whatever you buy in a store, this will not affect that at all. This is a separate income stream. So that's, that's kind of the opening context, is that I think we're, aside from the bond itself, I think that the city's in the position to consider it, is a huge triumph and a statement to what has been done by, by successive councils, successive leaderships, to, for us to arrive at a point where we have the financial solvency, the bond rating, and the capacity to move forward, should the council choose to do that. Next slide, please. So the bond consists of five recommended projects. And they're very specific, and we'll go into the numbers in a minute. It's a combination of projects for the Marina, and the Marina is an enterprise fund, so it does not use property tax. The Marina is supported by mortgage, fuel sales, and, and a few other kind of sources. But essentially, it comes from mortgage. So Marina dock replacement, that LM and N are Phase One, that's been discussed with council, that's been brought to council at least a couple of years ago during COVID. And since then, it entails, you'll see the numbers, but it, this is the majority of the bond. And this portion of the bond will be paid for by the Marina, which is an enterprise fund. Enterprise fund means that it has to, it can only expend what it receives in revenue. And our harbor master is here, and he has done a brilliant job of managing Marina finances. The Marina, the Marina fund itself is approximately $5 to $6 million a year. And Scott has been able to roll up, and somehow we didn't find out about this until recently, but about $4 million in fund balance, you know. So that's, that's really, that's really great that that's there. It also includes the Marina steps and plaza. We've had many discussions with the public about the Marina steps. We've gotten a lot of inputs. The, the, we anticipate that there'd be a lot of community input with this, and any final design for the steps and plaza would have to come to the council for approval. We would like to bring to the council at that time, community input. But one of the things that will be done upon approval of the bond by the council is that we will work to come up with specific designs, at least two different designs, for how the steps and the switchbacks access can be constructed, and where the utility corridors are. And at that point, bring in the public and have them, have everyone here in this room who wants to participate, and all residents, let us know what is their preference. We capped the Marina steps development at $9 million. We said another million for the plaza, and that was the lock. It's not going to cost more than that relative to construction, design, permitting, and all the different aspects. But when it's relevant, and when decisions that the public recommends, that those can be actually implemented through the design process, because we know where the utility corridors are, and we know what the development process could look like for different alternatives. The third project that we identified was the completion. The third project that we identified was the completion of the Redondo Fishing Pier and Restroom. Excuse me. And so, that is partially paid for right now. And in each of these, you'll see that we've received, um, when we look at the, Jeff will walk through the budget sheets for each of these projects. But in certain instances, we've received source, uh, money from external sources, not the least of which being the state legislature. And the legislature has timelines on the expenditure of funds. That was brought up. And yes, that's a, that's a, a concern, because why lose the money that we worked so hard to acquire from the legislature? And there are timelines on that. Um, we're also the, uh, going to look at trying to, um, develop an integrated parking system for Redondo, Redondo and the Marina. Um, we had one for the Marina. It was not seaworthy relative to weather, and it did not function effectively. And so, that's unacceptable. We probably amortized the money from that over the years, but it's not an acceptable system. What we want to do is establish a parking system that works in, in rain, and is easy to use, and would allow somebody with an annual pass to both enter at Redondo and at the city Marina. So, there's an integrated opportunity there. And then finally, a flag triangle at the, uh, northern boundary of the city, where it intersects with, uh, Marine View Drive, turning into Des Moines Memorial. And away to especially, and this has been talked about for a long time, there've been different efforts, all going all the way back to honoring, um, World War I vets, that this would be part of that, and that would be an honor for, for our vets, and a kind of a gateway into the city, saying, "You are now arriving at the, at the downtown of Des Moines, and/or you're leaving it." But we'd want vet participation, um, you know, the mayor has certainly been a supporter of this concept of some way to honor our vets, and I, I think it's really awesome that, that that's an option we can do for not very much money, but for, uh, a huge impact. Next, please. So, reference was made earlier to debt capacity. The, we have some outstanding bonds that, um, were refinanced in twenty eighteen for the Marina, and they will, um, term out in twenty thirty-eight. And so, until we are proposing the current bond, we use seven percent of the debt capacity of the city for those Marina bonds. And this bond that's being recommended, twenty-six million dollars, will add approximately twenty-six percent to our debt capacity, bringing it to, um, bringing it.
Thirty-three.
I'm wrong, right? It's. It's thirty-three, okay, sorry. Yeah, bringing it to thirty-three percent. So, of all of our, of our debt capacity as a city, we'd be at thirty-three percent. Other cities in our region are at a hundred percent. Okay, so this is still an extremely low number. And the issue for the city has never really been the debt capacity. It's been how do we pay back the debt, which is called debt service. So, that was something that had, that we had to work out, and I think Jeff may talk a little more about that, um, as we go through this. But anyway, that also allows for any future needs in the city that there's sixty-seven percent of our debt capacity is free. And the only challenge, once again, would be, how do we pay for it if we use more of it? There is no recommendation considered, talked about, ever mentioned about exceeding this twenty-six million. Next. So, servicing the debt, this is the hard part, so I'm happy to turn this over to Jeff.
Thanks. Um, so, servicing the debt, the question of how to pay off, um, the debt payments going forward. Of course, as it says, no property tax will be used to repay the debt. So, we had to look at other sources, uh, other than what we have in the general fund, which is for, uh, regular operations. Um, what we had available, uh, was real estate excise tax, referred to as REIT. So, the city receives, uh, REIT one and REIT two, uh, which are just two different quarter percents on, uh, real estate excise. Also, one-time sales tax and, uh, future parking revenue that would be generated from the integrated parking systems. And, uh, the next slide. Oh, yeah, okay. Um, I guess I'll just keep going. Project partners, um, so, just to explain, the state of Washington, we have legislative appropriations, uh, from the state. Uh, about a million dollars, uh, for the steps and about a million dollars for the Redondo Fishing Pier. Uh, we have a Department of Commerce grant from the state of Washington on, believe, on one of the projects. And we also have, uh, funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, that we received in twenty twenty-one. Okay, now, um, we'll walk through, uh, a few slides, uh, each one on one of the projects that the bond would fund. Uh, this information is in the packet. So, for the Marina Dock Replacement, overall, uh, you can see the expenditures, how those are broken out. Those are going to be about the same, uh, categories for each project. Uh, but looking at the funding, uh, for those expenditures, you can see for the Marina docks, it'll be about, um, these are in thousands, so that's one point six million, uh, Marina funds. And bond proceeds will be, uh, just short of thirteen million at twelve point seven four. On the Marina Steps and Plaza, uh, for this project, we have already, um, out, or a council has already allocated, uh, some ARPA funds, uh, for this project, and this would use one point one five one million dollars of ARPA funds. Uh, Washington State appropriation, uh, nine hundred and eighty thousand. And, uh, debt proceeds would be, uh, short of eight million dollars at seven point eight six nine million. So, overall, we're looking at, uh, ten million dollars, uh, of funding that's set aside for that project. And then Redondo Fishing Pier, uh, we have various funding sources here, so you can see there's REIT, um, two. Also, the Department of Commerce grants, the Washington State appropriation and debt proceeds. And you also notice that, um, the first column is the current budget, so that's already, uh, what's currently budgeted. And on the last column on the right is the total budget, so that's what it would be, uh, going forward. So, we would still maintain the REIT two that's already allocated to the project. Uh, we have the grant funds of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, uh, that's allocated. Uh, then there's our nine hundred and eighty thousand from Washington State, and then the debt proceeds of nearly two million dollars. So, that would be, um, total project would be little over four million dollars. The Redondo Restroom, uh, again, you can see that we are, uh, using REIT two, about a hundred thousand, and then, uh, one point seven million in debt proceeds. Um, and the paid parking, um, that one-time tax is the one-time sales tax that, uh, we've referenced already, is twenty-five thousand dollars. And then the rest would be debt proceeds of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, for a total of three hundred and eighty thousand. And then the Marina and Beach Paid Parking, so this would be the other side of the, um, parking system, which would be, uh, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of bond proceeds. And finally, uh, the Flag Triangle would use about a hundred and sixty thousand of ARPA funds and a hundred and eleven thousand of two hundred and, uh, twenty-three bond proceeds. And I think that's the last slide. And as I said, the, that information is all found in, in the packet.
Thank you. Mayor, I think that concludes our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Um, let's, let's go ahead and get a motion first. Uh, council member Nutting.
I move to pass draft ordinance number two-three dash zero-two-two to a second reading on June eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. All right, questions? Uh, I'll start with Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Steinmetz, then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I noticed, Jeff, that the, uh, on your debt service list, that it didn't indicate mortgage from the Marina. Will some of the debt service come from mortgage, since the docks will be part of the package?
That would be the Marina funds that was mentioned.
Okay.
So, the ca- the cash and revenue generated by the Marina would go towards.
Okay.
Councilmember, I'm not sure. I thought it was clearer, um, all the costs of the docks will be borne by the Marina, and the majority of Marina funds are derived from mortgage.
Okay, so they'll kind of be separated by project inside the bond? Okay, thank you. And then, uh, once the bond is issued, could you clarify, projects can be added or eliminated from the bond package?
Um, council member, you, um, I sent you a note earlier today, and, uh, bond counsel can correct me. However, the, these five projects are the defined projects as part of the bond covenant. And that it is not possible to really change, trans- transition, add, subtract, whatever. It's these five projects and the cost of issuance.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Well, I actually had the same question that Tracy did. Where, where was the Marina docks, the enterprise fund piece going, going to go to debt service? But, uh, I, it, it was not as clear as we had hoped, but thank you for the explanation.
Okay. First, yeah.
So, that's the, the sixteen hundred from the Marina, um, and it's contributing to the, the cost. And then the, um, let's see, we've got bond proceeds of about twelve million. And those, and the debt service will, for that will be paid for by the Marina. For that portion.
Okay, I'm, I'm understanding that now, but further up.
Yeah.
When you were talking about what, where the debt service was going to come from.
Yeah.
That's, that's where you, that's where you lost me, where the Marina piece was.
Right, okay.
And I'm just, I'm, I'm not.
There's nothing there.
Yeah, we were, speak, th- this one speaks to the city's side of funding theirs, and we didn't make, we didn't spell out that the Marina was paying for the Marina's dock replacement, so that was.
Okay, that just, it would have been helpful.
Yeah.
Or, or at least in my linear mind.
I can see that.
Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Harris.
Uh, yes, I would like to, uh, hold this over to the first meeting in July. There is simply too much stuff.
Are you making a motion, sir?
I am making a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I think in, in particular with regard to the Marina Steps and the developments in the Marina, that there's, you know, I'm not sure what we're doing. I mean, at the, at the, uh, recent, uh, committee meeting, it was said that, oh, well, the steps now may be migrating to the, uh, parcel A, which was the hotel, uh, parcel. We've heard tonight from audience members that, uh, yeah, it's, they want to have, uh, greater discussion and greater understanding of exactly what is going on. And with this, this is a huge amount of money that we're, we're considering here, and I would act, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, I'd like to, you know, would it be appropriate to have a study session on this particular issue?
Any other discussion before I call the vote? I have Councilmember Harris, then I'll go to you, Councilmember Steinmetz.
I, I will just say that this, uh, suffers from the same defects as, um, Deputy Mayor Buxton attempting to provide, uh, this language, um, on steroids. I mean, there aren't enough steroids. It's, haha, it, it, see how challenging it is to make even four minor changes. Um, we're talking about conflating, um, fi- five major projects, and it is clear that the city has more available information about the look and feel of all of them. Um, and that should all be presented, um, to the council before we even have this kind of thing. We're talking in abstractions here. And, um, you know, the, uh, yeah, I've, there are simply too many questions to, uh, to even talk about this, um, in an, in an intelligent way. Um, we've got another major item, uh, coming up, so, um, yeah, uh, A, move it to July, and B, can we please get more specifics on, in fact, I would just encourage my colleagues to support my, uh, motion and then, um, submit questions to be, uh, answered before that meeting as part of that packet.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is unnecessarily conflating two separate issues. One is the financing. This is how we're going to finance this. We've known about this project. We know what we want to do in a general and conceptual sense, uh, with the Marina. And it's important to get that ball rolling. Um, two is the final design plans, you know, ultimately what it looks like. And we do need a lot of public input on that, but those don't happen simultaneously. That's not how the development process works. And so, you know, if you're, if you're, you know, terribly unclear about what it's going to look like, I'm afraid you haven't been paying too much attention. That's the only thing I can come up with an explanation, uh, to, to understand that. The, the final designs, yes, uh, we're going to need some of that. But those are two separate and distinct issues. And so, no, I see no reason to put this over to July the first, and so, I'm opposed to the motion.
Um, I'm gonna, we'll, we'll get around, count, count, we're going to go with everybody for the first time. I'll, I'll go, and then Councilmember Pennington, then I say Councilmember Oxiger, then Councilmember Harris for their second times. Um, these have been in the CIP. All of us have ran on this predicated thing. These are big projects all across our city that we've worked for years to do, to put us in a position. The details everybody's concerned about are going to come later. This is part of the process, as you well said, and I won't support moving to a meeting. A lot of people talk about study sessions and other things. We've had, we've been doing this since nineteen thirty-nine, or for thirty-nine years, folks, it's nineteen eighty-four. And this is the kind of steps that have pulled it back and made, and all of a sudden, we're waiting, and all of a sudden, it's postponed, and all of a sudden, it doesn't happen. And this is the case where we've never been in a better position, thanks to the hard work, and we need to go forward with it. And this, this begins that process to get us to where we've all wanted to go all along. You will have your say, and it will be at the right place and time. With that being, Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, it says in here the design of the steps will, um, continue to include community inputs. So, there's a, it, it's right in the document that, you know, there's a couple of different designs with that. Um, we've got X amount of dollars that we know are going to be allocated to that, so we know the costs. We just need to know what it's going to look like. And, and, and we'll get that. We'll get that, that input. The public will get that input, um, in, into what design they, they prefer to have. Um, I couldn't agree more with, uh, uh, Councilmember Steinmetz, you know, in that, in, in what he said. And, and I would say that, you know, there's, there's a lot of excuses why this shouldn't go forward. And progress begins when the excuses stop. So, I will be, um, voting against the amendment.
Councilmember Oxiger, or did you, did you want your first time, Deputy Mayor Buxton, before? Okay, I'm going to give you that, your first time, before we go for around a second.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, this is very similar to this presentation and the way it's being presented on these spreadsheets without the detail, but you've got the, your financials there, you have your main projects. This is what fills our transportation improvement plan and our capital improvement plan. And this is the basis upon which we make all of our decisions about all of the projects in our city on similar spreadsheets like this at, at this level for council members. So, I'm not uncomfortable with that level, kind of echo council member, with this level of information to make a financial decision on a bond. And then, most importantly, I think the approval of this bond, um, is the next phase of growth and vibrant. It, it begins the wheel, uh, it begins the wheels in the next phase of growth and vibrancy in our city. Um, we have been able to do this for two decades. What this does is our, our movement here assures potential partners, investors, businesses, present businesses and future businesses, that we are serious about the economic strength in our city and supporting it, that we've got skin in the game, and we are, we're going to be assertive about this. And I am excited about it for us, but to put that message out into the region, that this is where we are, and this is what we're going to do. So, uh, that's all I have at this juncture. Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to Councilmember Oxiger for a second time.
And so, what happens when we go out for public input, and the public reacts the same way they did about the Marina, the hotel in the north parking lot of the Marina? And we come back and go, "Okay, we're not going there because the people that, we've already got the bond money." You know, what it, what, what you're doing is, is that you're, you're committing us and saying, "Okay, we'll come back and get, get, uh, public input later." But you're committing us to a course that what do you.
But you're committing us to a course that what are you going to do if you reverse it? What if, what if the public says, says, hell no, we're not going there? We've already got the money. We're already having to pay, do debt service, right?
I gotta go to councilmember Harris. Then I see you guys for, I see you both for your second times.
I was thinking about the conquistador Hernán Cortés, who burned his ships when he reached the New World so that his troops would be well motivated to carry forward. I was thinking back in my career of the times when clients gave us a 100% deposit as a motivator. And that never happened to me. I have no, I have nothing, I have such a long list of questions, but this is so cockamamie that, yeah, I, I, I don't want to dignify the issue with, you know, yeah, it's, it's just ridiculous. Thank you.
All right. I had councilmember Steinmetz, then Deputy Mayor Buxton for your second time before I take a vote.
Yeah, thanks. And, and perhaps we can have some clarity from our bond counsel. But if we don't spend the money, we don't spend the money and pay it back is sort of how I understand it. Is that incorrect?
It's not quite correct. Alice Ostick with Stradling, Bond Counsel to the City, glad to see you all again. So to understand the timing of the authorization, the action in the ordinance simply is an authorization. The timing of actually issuing the debt will follow, and it will follow when the projects are ready to be financed. And so, in, in, in particular under federal tax law, which is what I'm tasked with keeping an eye on, the debt won't be issued until there's a reasonable certainty that it can be spent within at least twenty-four months or less. And so the idea is to time the issuance close to, once you have project ability to spend those dollars, so that you're not sitting on dollars or paying debt service and interest on dollars that you're not ready to use. And so that's just a function of federal tax law. The ordinance, if you look at it in the exhibit, which contains the parameters that describe the authority that's delegated here, state that this authorization extends over into December, I think, twenty twenty-four. And so there is a timeline built in within which the city can prepare all of those processes and ensure that no debt is issued before those projects are ready to be constructed.
Okay, thank you very much.
I had Deputy Mayor Buxton, then, then councilmember Nutting.
We are in the middle of that motion discussion still.
Yes, we're gonna, we're, we're finishing up here so we can take a vote on it.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Nutting, do you have anything?
My only question was a follow-up to what was just said. So then at the end of twenty twenty-four, if no action is taken, then it just expires.
Then it just expires and the authorization just goes away.
The only thing I'll add is the, the hotel's off the table, but the, the Marina steps, for the many years, has been all part of the conversation. It's been received well. In fact, people were picking the way they wanted the switchbacks to go and the types of vegetation and the look and feel. It isn't, it isn't the controversy that the other one had. You might make it. And the truth is, is right simply here is, is this really is determining whether you're for our future or you're not. With that, I'm going to take a vote. As we, are we moving it? Are, are we going to move this study session to July second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see councilmember Harris. I see councilmember Oxiger. All those opposed? I see councilmember Pennington, councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, councilmember Nutting, and myself. The motion fails two-five. All right, so we have the original motion that we move, move to a second reading on June eighth. Is there any discussion before I take a vote? Seeing none. All those in favor that recommend that we move the, move it, the draft ordinance number twenty-three zero-two-two to a second reading on June eighth, raise your right hand. I see councilmember Pennington. I see councilmember Steinmetz. I see Deputy Mayor Buxton. I see councilmember Nutting and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Harris and councilmember Oxiger. It will be to a second reading on six-eight by a vote of five-two. All right, moving on to the next business. All right, council, before we get into the first reading of the city of, city of council protocol, one of the things is, is we, we have about fifty minutes before we'll have to extend. I do believe this will take longer. I am, I'm going to have Deputy Mayor Buxton, who is the chair of the Ad hoc Committee, and councilmember Steinmetz intro it. And then I'm going to talk about the guidelines and the rules that we'll, we'll follow as we try to move through the chapters as efficiently as we possibly can. And, yes?
I would suggest at this point, a short break.
Okay, I'll, we'll do a five, five-minute break, no more than that because we're going to need every minute. So we'll start again, as the clock says it, at eight seventeen. Could everybody return to the dais, please? Deputy Mayor Buxton, can we get you back? Councilmember Harris, can we get you back?
So are we going to go over this item or line by line?
We're going to go chapter by chapter and any recommendations. Oh, no. All right, we're back in session, thank you. All right, so getting back to City of Des Moines, city council protocol manual adoption. I'm going to turn it over to councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Buxton and councilmember Steinmetz for the intro, and then I'll talk about how we're going to go through the document in review. There we go. I turn the floor to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this has been an exciting process, actually. I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to address some of these things and to move through this. So in a few moments, I will actually pass the baton to councilmember Steinmetz, and he's going to talk about some of the elements that we addressed in the document. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the process. So once we were commissioned to begin the research on this, we set out doing some reading on our own. And then we reviewed the protocol manuals or council rules, a lot of cities call them different things, but from thirteen cities. I personally interviewed some, several electeds. I did some research with, with Association of Washington Cities Municipal Research and Service Center, and then consulted with Ann McFarlane from Jurassic Parliament in the process. We, being inspired by reading these documents from other cities, our list of items that we wanted to address actually grew. And we recognized also that we had kind of an antiquated form of our own document in title, style, and language. So we wanted to create a tool for ourselves, but also an updated resource for our citizens. And so we, we recognized there was going to be so much there that we, we begin to entertain an entire rewrite. So we wanted to pick, we, we thought part of the vetting for this would be to actually pick a template from another city and insert our rules into that. It's just, it would be another way of, when we read through, if you read through this manual, most of the wording comes from another city. It looks like it's our city because so many of the items really are pervasive throughout municipal government all over. So it, it helped us, we felt like it helped to vet it using a, we, from another city. We chose a city of similar size that had a medium-sized document with updated form and language, and that was the city of Bothell. We incorporated our current document into the new template, not vice versa. I just talked about that, which added credibility. And because, and also this isn't about us in this time or any particular council member here, but it's, it's a regional issue, it's a city issue, and it's for, but it's also for our future. It's not just for this council. We wanted to consider the future. There were countless iterations as we went through this. We did a detailed review and vetting by our staff, our legal team. And then mid-process, I consulted with Ann McFarlane. And then also in the end, we had a final consult with Jurassic Parliament. Just as a comment, Jurassic Parliament and Ann McFarlane, she is statewide recognized as a premier parliamentarian. She's an educator. Several municipalities across the state and organizations across the state rely on her and her advice about how to conduct business. So what we have is a document with an updated title, language, font, appearance, subject matter, and links. It's comprehensive, it's a readable resource for us, for our staff, and we feel like the public. We hope this will be helpful for our citizens as well. So at this point, I'd like to pass it off to councilmember Steinmetz. Thank you.
Sure, and, and what I've been asked to do is try to address why. Why do we need a rewrite of our rules? Well, and there are a lot of reasons for that. And I'm going to kind of go through a laundry list of what I, what I have. First of all, is the rules that we're operating with are fairly old. There, the last major rewrite was in two thousand twelve, and there have been some minor changes in two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen, but certainly nothing that was a comprehensive look at what we were doing, at the rules that control or govern us as a council. We needed more clearly define what the roles and responsibilities of the council, the committee, the staff, and the public are in the context of us operating as a council. And all of those have changed over the years. There has been an evolution in how all this is supposed to work. We needed to address ethical behavior. And this range is, in a lot of ways, including, frankly, former councilmen getting jobs with the city immediately after moving on, which, while I think there were some, you know, it was well thought out because he had an expertise that nobody else did. It stinks. It looked really bad. And I don't think we can allow ourselves to accept that kind of behavior on that. Furthermore, we need a more clearly defined executive session, and we need to make sure that our executive session rules are in conformance with the RCW. Furthermore, we need much greater clarity in our communications. And these, these rules will help address that. The one glaring error or glaring absence in the current rules that we have is there's absolutely nothing to address social media. No way. You know, and it is so prevalent today that, you know, several individuals want to take their, their arguments out on social media and don't even want to address it with their colleagues anymore. We need to at least have some rules to clarify that. There is a clarity for, about our form of government, and again, getting back to what the various roles are. And not, nothing against our city manager, but I'm assuming he's not going to be around here forever. And so we want to have some well-defined relationship between the council and the city manager so that the next person that comes along, you know, has some good definition of what that job's going to be.
Councilmember, do you know something I don't?
Only, only the inevitability of time. Okay. And, you know, we need to understand what the duties of the committees are, what the arrangements, qualifications are, who gets appointed to what and why. arrangements qualifications are, who gets appointed to what and why, and who does that, and there are just a number of sort of fundamental matters in the way that we do it. We also have a situation that is pretty unique in that we need to have a dress code and decorum. You know, we, we've had instances of people coming to council way underdressed for the importance of the role that we're doing. I've heard several complaints about that. But also along those lines, we need to understand that the way people dress may have health reasons, may have religious reasons, and they can apply for an exception on that. We've tried very hard, when we were able to get some input from whatever source, to try to address those concerns. And then, lastly, there was a whole lot of sort of apocalyptic vision and hysterical rhetoric today on Facebook about getting rid of Rule 26A. 26A is the, is the rule that automatically passes it on to a second reading, and that's for every piece of legislation in this council. And we regularly waive that. I spent, you know, a good six, the first six months, maybe even longer than that, trying to get the justification for that out on the record every time, but frankly, it was always done. And most of the things that we deal with do not require a second reading. They're not controversial issues, but there's absolutely nothing in these rules that prevents any council member from trying to, from making the request essentially to move this piece of legislation onto a second reading at a somewhat later date. You know, this is not anybody losing their right to comment. They will have plenty of opportunity to comment, and if something does come up, public, you know, there's the public comments at the beginning, there always is, same as whatever exists even in a second reading, and there is the chance for emails to the council and formal correspondence. So those are all the reasons that we needed to really sit down and think through what we wanted to do, how we wanted to do it, and what did we want it to look like. And, you know, Deputy Mayor Buxton has been pushing for this since she first got onto the council, and it was time. It's also something that was important to me, but since she got here first, I wanna make sure that she gets the credit. And so, you know, when I was able to join her on the council, we both pushed for it, and, you know, the council finally approved that we get to do a rewrite of the rules. And so I think this is a, a much more modern set of rules. We've done everything we can to assure that not only have, that everybody had a chance to look at them, we also made sure that we had them reviewed by a professional in the field who is well-respected, that everybody has a lot of respect for, and has been named. And so, you know, I hope people understand, this is not about any individual, this is not about any one thing, this is not about anybody's trying to limit anybody else. This is about trying to come up with a set of rules that work in 2023, and hopefully through the rest of this decade, and probably they'll need to be updated in about a decade. But that's because we live in an evolving society. Things change, and we need to meet that change, and this is a good council for meeting that change. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you both. So council, it's, it's eight-thirty now, we would have to move for an extension probably about in twenty-five minutes. We also have board and committee reports and any new business as well. Drove me off for a second. Anyway, the thing is, is that what I propose is we're gonna go section by section, chapter by chapter. And so an example will be, I'll say, Chapter One, and I'll go, does anybody have any comments or questions about anything in the Chapter One? And we'll have a discussion on Chapter One, and we'll discuss and make amendments or, if we, if necessary, if, it'll be, it'll be by majority that, if, if a change is made or not made, and then we'll move on to the next chapter and so forth. We're going to go as far as we can, before we would, we can continue this at the next meeting, so when we leave off on Chapter Six, we can do the other chapters next week 'cause it's a two-reading process, all right? But the idea is to try, the idea is everybody's read these, has an idea of, of what they are, and everybody who would, would come here with their points and concerns. We've had several meetings, many of our council members have attended, even though there was just three of us on the ad hoc committee, and I believe everybody should have done their homework and be ready for this. So with that being said, I'm going to, I'm going to see how far we get, we'll make the extension, and when we ma, if we make the extension, we're gonna talk about how much further we're gonna go before we'll go, to the board and committee reports, new business, et cetera, so we can end the meeting at a reasonable time tonight. All right, with that being said, I'm going to start on, I'm gonna start with the oath of office. Does any council member have an issue with the oath of office? Councilmember Harris?
I would move to hold this process over until our, and start fresh at our next meeting, so we can have this on the board, and, and it, the lateness of the hour, it's, it's just, yeah.
Do, do I have a, a second? I have a second. I'm just gonna take...
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna object, that's out of order. At this point, we, we've already started the process.
Yeah, let's, let's just, let's just go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of sending this to next week's meeting, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxiger, all those opposed. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. We will continue. All right, does anybody have a problem with the oath of office? Seeing none. Does anybody have a comment or a issue with the forward? Seeing none. All right, moving on to Chapter One. Does anybody have comments or, or issues with any of the content of Chapter One? I'm seeing none. Moving on to Chapter Two. This is the Des Moines City Council General Powers and Responsibilities. Does anybody have any issue with this? Councilmember Harris?
Actually, I'll beg your indulgence and ask that we go back to Chapter One. I, I had a, an amendment in a subsequent chapter, but I think it's better placed here.
Council, go ahead and be, be as precise as you can, please.
Sure. 1.06. If one has a medical accommodation, there should be some form of confidentiality that all employees have with HR. This should be one case where one does not be mediated by the city manager. One should be able to talk about a health issue directly with HR, and it should be a private matter.
I essentially...
I essentially have that, read that way. It's, it's, it's exactly what it says, and you would submit, you would submit the issue with HR, it'd be handled just like an employee would for those types of needs, and that would be the end of the story.
Okay, but, see, the thing is that, moving on into Chapters Five, it, it talks about council relations, and it says that, you know, everything needs to be mediated through the city manager, and so I think it should be spelled out.
We'll look at that when we get to Chapter Five. How about that? That you call that out in Chapter Five. I think this covers what you're looking for.
Well, you know, I had a specific case where I have attempted to meet with HR regarding health issues and been denied. I've been told, no, you have to pass it on to Michael.
Approve this, approve this manual, and you've got your direct route.
It does not say that, sir. I mean, you can...
It's submit a request for reasonable accommodation to the city's Human Resource Department. It does say that. All right, moving on to Chapter Two. Is there any concerns or questions about Chapter Two? Hearing none.
No. I'm trying to scroll. Okay. Mr. Mayor, could you possibly make the big screen...
Yeah, yes, could you, yeah, expand that a little bit? Cite, cite, cite the reference, cite the chapter if, if you have something on Chapter Two.
Yes. It is 2.10.
2.10, moving to 2.10. Okay? Incompatibility of offices.
Right. This is something that's going on right now. Here has challenged my serving on the Des Moines metropolitan park board, and the issue here is that the city is trying to, I mean, this, this proposal here is saying that the, the council can determine what the qualifications are for serving on city council. That is a legislative project, not, not the city.
It, it's the RCWs, they've already established, that give the guidelines. In your particular case, obviously, the courts are gonna decide whether you have validity or not. Is that correct, City Attorney?
Yeah, well, this language says that you can't hold two elected positions, so it would be a violation of these council rules, whether it's incompatible or not. You know, this is a fairly common provision that, you know, councils want their elected leaders to be clearly loyal to one elected position and to the public that elected them, and not be, you know, potentially loyal to two different electorates. So, yeah, this, this isn't, this isn't saying that someone cannot be elected to two positions, it's just saying it's a violation of the council rules. It wouldn't, there is no penalty in here that would, the council doesn't have the ability to remove somebody from office, but they do have the ability to say, we think that's against our rules, and we can withhold committee positions or other things if you violate these rules.
In other words, you're inserting a penalty for doing something that is potentially approved by statute, by state statute.
What, what state statute is that?
Pardon? The state statute that allows, in my case, that allows city council members to serve on metropolitan park districts.
I'm not aware of that statute.
It's, look under the metropolitan park district, the formation of the district and, and the people that are allowed on it.
I, I've looked at those, and, and I believe you have my opinion on this issue. But I think in, in your position, it's certainly a, a situation where the court will decide. The council has the ability to create rules for the council, and this is the rule that the council has proposed, so...
And the council cannot supersede the legislature.
Sure, but I, I don't believe that they're doing that in this situation. I'll just note that there's, this is a common rule, so, that's, you know, I think we have different understandings or different readings of the statute that you're referring to, and that, that pertains to your specific situation, but I will tell you that this is a very common rule, and actually, I think...
This one came from Bothell.
And also from the city of Sea-Tac, so...
And it is, it is merited, as, as was said, that there's potential crossover and potential conflict of interest as well, and that does affect council, committee assignments and so forth. Anyway, are you making a motion that that be stricken or removed? Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second? I see none, fails for lack of a second. Moving on to Chapter Three. Does anybody have any callouts on Chapter Three? All right, seeing none. Financial matters, Chapter Four. Any callouts or concerns? All right? Okay?
Financial disclosure. I'm sorry, I'm missing the other reference.
On, on 4.03.
Yes. Oh, okay, this is just a question of, okay, what is the purpose of financial disclosure? It's to let the public know what their representatives are, you know, what their financial situation is, if they have any conflicts or anything. It seems strange, excuse me, it seems strange to me that, that you have to file within two, file F1, Financial Disclosure Statement, with the super, with the Public Disclosure Commission, within two weeks of filing for office. But when you go down to when someone is appointed, and people are considering who's appointed, there's no requirement that, that financial disclosure be made until two weeks after the appointment is made. The purpose of the disclosure is to let the public know what the financial situation is. So I think this should be that, you know, if you file for appointment to the council, you have to file a F1 statement, and I, and interestingly enough, that was the rules, I believe, not the, not the previous, most previous appointment to the council, but it was the one before.
Would have been at least eleven years ago. Did anybody, did you wanna, I saw, do you wanna speak on that?
Yeah, I, I mean, as, as one of those who voluntarily filed one when I was seeking an appointment, you know, I don't think that's a bad idea, that people seeking the appointment should include some level of financial disclosure. It is not required by statute to do that. I believe this is consistent with the statute, the, yeah, the RCW, and to file it within two weeks of the appointment. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure what, what problem we're really, we're trying to solve if the state didn't see it as one, and it's inconsistent, but it's not. Well, the disclosure is for the public's knowledge, and so they should have knowledge of who's, you know, up for appointment.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Buxton, and I see you, Councilmember Harris.
I think that the state gives a little leeway here for us to decide how we wanted to do it, and I felt, I think we had a long discussion about this and felt that when, when people are putting a huge investment into run a campaign, and the public is going to vote for them, that that's appropriate. But we felt like it's a little bit less of an investment, could be as little as a two-to-three week process for vacancy filling, that it's hard to ask people who, they don't know for sure if they're gonna be appointed or not, they don't have this huge financial commitment and out into the public to, all of a sudden, after three weeks now, all of their financial information is public information. It's just, it's such a short window. We felt like this was a compassionate decision for people, that to not ask ten people or six people who just wanted to file for appointment, now all those people's personal information is out there. It's, it's a different ask.
Real quick clarification from our City Attorney.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm what Councilmember Steinmetz said, that this, this language mirrors the PDC language. The requirement for an appointed position is that you file two weeks, within two weeks after the appointment.
Councilmember Harris?
I would move that an F1 should be a requirement for applying for an appointment.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Steinmetz, or Councilmember...
I need a moment to think about it.
What?
This was a long conversation.
Then may I make a comment? If you, you are being given the same authority, and in the last couple of appointments, you know, it's, it's basically, when you're appointed, it's almost like a, a layup to get re-elected, and, and so regardless of the...
You mean appointed.
What's that?
You mean appointed.
People who get appointed, it is just a statistical, you know, correlation that they tend to get elected in the, you know, and you have the same authority once you're And you have the same authority once you're appointed as you do when you're elected and therefore you should have the same accountability to the public. And lowering the bar, I understand, I had this discussion with Pina a number of times, you keep making it easier and easier, that was his thought, to attain office. And essentially, it doesn't actually help the process. If you want better electeds, you should raise the bar. That's always been my feeling. So I think that, yeah, you should have the same requirements for appointment as for being an elected.
So what's the motion? What is the verbiage that we're
The motion is, is that they file, in an appointment process, they file an F1 in conjunction with their application.
Yes.
Mayor, can I just make a point here? If the council does want to pass that motion, the next paragraph about failure to file, if done knowingly, is a Class One misdemeanor, that won't be correct anymore. Because it's not a crime to not file your F1 two weeks before you get appointed. So we would have to change that language to reflect that it's just a violation of the council rules. It's no longer a Class One misdemeanor. There also wouldn't be civil penalties for that. So.
Point of clarification, just to be clear, it would still, failing to file within the two weeks, would we ever get to? It would still be, because that's all in state statute, correct?
Yeah, so that would just have to, that paragraph, the second paragraph would have to be amended as well if you want to amend the first paragraph.
Okay.
And I'd ask, would that be a friendly amendment?
Senator Pennington, did I see that you had
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm not going to vote in favor of this because I think we just need to stay consistent with the state statute. I think you can start going too many one-offs in different directions and then your rules become obsolete at some point.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of changing it to the amendment, obviously with the removing of the last sentence, raise your right hand.
Senator, put a clarification.
Sure.
Is it a friendly amendment to strike the two lines that follow about the
Yes.
Class One misdemeanor?
Yes, I included that, that was my intent.
The maker of the amendment needs to
Okay.
Accept that as a friendly.
You accept, Ian, you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I thought that was
Okay. All right. All those in favor of making that change, raise your right hand.
If the amendment goes
I see, I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, or Deputy Mayor Buxton and Councilmember Oxger. So motion and all those opposed. Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Nutting and myself. That motion, the adjustment passes four, three. All right. Is there any other discussion in Chapter Four? Seeing none. We will move on to Chapter Five. Is there any callouts here? Councilmember Harris, you had, I knew you had an issue with Five versus the Chapter One.
Well, yeah, where to begin? First of all, five point, let's see here. Where is the thing? And I apologize. Where it says, error of fact. Communication with the public, 507. I was going to say F. I wrote down, but I'm half-blind, so. Oh, yeah, F. 503F, thank you. Yeah.
503F, you said?
Yeah, I moved to strike that whole thing. It's simply, it's simply too vague, okay? One person's fact, you know, you could, you can say, you know, I really, I want to keep this friendly, as they say, but, you know, the city can present a cost and it can include certain elements. And I can say, no, that's not the right cost because it doesn't include these other things. They're both accurate. So this is the kind of thing where it comes down to four votes dictating what is factual and that cannot be the case.
No, that is the majority of the council, sir.
Yeah, but facts are not subject to a majority.
Yeah, I would say more perception of facts rather than facts.
Indeed.
Okay, so he has a motion to strike this. Does he have a second? I see a second from Councilmember Oxger. Any discussion before we take a vote? Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I did want to add that this entire section was based out of the communications section from the City of Kirkland. So these, all of these items here were vetted through their council and I think that helps a little bit. But I don't want to strike it. I think that factual errors, when realized, should be corrected publicly, absolutely.
Agreed. Councilmember Harris, your second time.
Well, again, you know, if we're talking about Newton's Second Law motion, that's one thing. But anything having to do with politics, there can be two equally valid presentations of facts. And if the one you don't like happens to be in the minority, there's a problem. It needs to go and that's all I got to say about it.
All right. All those in favor of striking 503F, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, I see Councilmember Oxger, all those opposed. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. Motion fails two, five. All right. Next one, sir.
Yeah, so, gee, this whole idea of undermining the decisions of the body. Again, I have no idea what that means and I don't think anyone else does. It's essentially whatever, if the majority finds someone's comments outside of, or even here, to be objectionable, you can just say, you're undermining the council and that's ridiculous, okay? This is, yeah. So undermine the whole thing. It's just, it, these rules should be something that can, you know, be defined in some
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
On the striking of this motion?
Are you, was the motion to strike the whole thing?
Strike.
You can't
503G.
You can't define what undermine means. I mean, it's ridiculous.
That's true. I'll second it.
All right. Deputy Mayor Buxton, you had a comment.
I feel very strongly about this, for one, here again, this is wording that was vetted in the council chambers in the City of Kirkland. And again, there are articles out on municipal research and service center on this exact subject, using that exact word. We vetted this with Ann McFarlane and she, and you actually asked a specific question to her about this and she reinforced her opinion on this as that this is appropriate language. It's an appropriate expectation. And it's a well-known, I wouldn't, I don't know if you want to call it doctrine in municipal procedure and parliamentary procedure that this is a valid expectation across the board. And you can call it industry standard. So I'm not open to an excuse that says, I don't understand what the word undermine means.
All right. Councilmember Steinmetz.
I'd also point out that this only applies to decisions of the body. And so what this means is that the city council has voted and made a decision. Anybody that goes out and undermines that decision, which is very specific and I think we can figure out what that means if we have, you know, half a brain in our head, that is not an uncommon thing and that is inappropriate behavior. Once the vote's been taken, move on. And that's really what this means. And so I would encourage everybody to take their vote, if you take your lumps sometimes, and you move on to the next thing. This is non-uncommon language. It's been approved by Jurassic Parliament. In fact, when asked specifically about it by you, sir, she reinforced that this was a very appropriate thing to have in the council rules.
Before we go over any further, we're at nine, or 8:55 and do we have a motion to extend this conversation for a window of time, a definite window of time before we continue on? Okay? What would be acceptable? Another 30 minutes?
Yes, well, extend to 9:30.
We'll say 9:25. That
I'll go with that. I'll amend my motion. Second. Or, no.
You can't.
You amended it, though.
No, I just made a suggestion that you amended
Okay, so I'm amending it, then.
To 9:25.
Okay, I make the
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Councilmember Steinmetz. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I have a second. I would like to make
Comment about it?
Well, comment and a friendly suggestion that we extend it to 9:25 but we forego the rest of the meeting and end it at that time.
So no committee and board reports?
No committee of reports.
Okay, is that acceptable amendment? Is that?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We go to 9:25. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Wait, I thought we were voting on Councilmember Nutting's amendment to this.
No, it was friendly and added to the amendment, so it's one and the same. So you're, are you voting yes or no, sir?
I'm voting no.
Okay. Councilmember Nutting and myself and those opposed. I see Councilmember Harris and I see Councilmember Oxger. So the motion passed five, two. We will end the meeting sharply at 9:25. All right. And foregoing any board and committee reports. All right. So we were, so we left off, where Councilmember Harris and I believe Councilmember Oxger still wanted to speak for the second time on 5G. So go ahead.
So, yeah, you know, I don't care if it comes with a seal of approval of the Land of Oz. Basically undermine, you know, it's, so you think about any other politics, if Karen Kaiser loses a vote at the state level, she will speak vociferously about it and indicate her strong determination to change that law to be more equitable at her first opportunity, as would somebody at the federal level or the county level. It is completely normative to say, I disagreed with that vote and I want things to be different. The, where things would be inappropriate, I think the limit of undermine would be if, let's say we, you know, this ferry thing, which I disagree with, if I go out there and I say, hey, don't ride the ferry, yeah, that's, you know, that's no good. But that's, that's a very different kind of a thing. And I think the language should indicate specifically that it is inappropriate to encourage people to not follow the law. But to simply disagree ex post facto seems, that is just the essence of politics.
All right, Councilmember Oxger.
And I believe that's the distinction that Ann McFarlane made.
Yeah, I know that, I know that because she wrote an article about me in one of her
No, no, but I mean, that's the distinction she made, is, okay, when you say undermine, if this body, if the majority says that, okay, we'll disagree with what we said, constitutes undermining, well, then you're basically taking away our First Amendment rights to comment on issues. Commenting, commenting on an issue, disagreeing on an issue, is not the same as undermining. And she made that point.
Well, you see, that's how you can cherry pick.
Sir, I did not recognize you. Council
Yeah, the First Amendment is not implicated here in any way, shape or form. You are a member of the council, Mr. Harris, Mr. Pennington, Ms. Buxton, everybody up here. We are members of the council. We are asked to make decisions. We make those decisions. And if you choose, once the decision is made, to go out and undermine the authority of that decision, then all we can do is sanction somebody. That's the biggest penalty there is and therefore it's not a restriction on your First Amendment whatsoever. And, you know, there's only one other guy in the room that's actually had any classes in this. And, you know, he and I have talked about this in the meeting with everybody present and tried to provide some clarification for that. And yet it just simply, and I believe both you and Mr. Harris were present for that discussion, and it seems to have fallen on deaf ears and that's unfortunate. The First Amendment is not only implicated here.
All right, so I have Councilmember Harris and then I'll go to Councilmember Oxger and we'll take a vote. Councilmember Harris, you had something to say?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Oxger.
First of all, I was in the first two meetings and there was no opportunity for members of the audience to speak on the issue. The second thing is, is that you're leaving it up to the council to determine what constitutes undermining. If it's simply saying, I disagree with the decision of the council and here's why, that in my book is not undermining the council. The decision's been made by the council, that's fine. But if we leave it to the point where the council, council majority can say, even a protestation of what was, what the decision was constitutes undermining, that's not right.
All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of scratching out 503G, raise your right hand. I see, I see Councilmember Harris, I see Councilmember Oxger, all those opposed. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. The 503G will stay. All right, moving on. Through the rest
Yes, so, and with regard to H.
Okay, so now you're 503H.
Yes. It says, in this case, council members may request city letterhead and their council titles for such letters upon approval of the mayor. I don't have specific language, but not to put too fine a point on it, I don't think the mayor should have the unilateral authority to whip out a piece of letterhead and write such a thing. And that's the implication of this. Basically, we're seven council members and it should be the case that if we all have to ask permission to get letterhead, then the mayor should also have to ask permission to write a letter of recommendation. So the, it should basically be that, you know, any kind of letters of recommendation and so on should be subject to a, the consent of the entire council, mayor included.
Deputy Mayor Buxton. Are you making a motion, so get that first?
I am.
To scratch that, is what you're saying, or you wanted
I'm saying to modify it and I'm open to just, I'm putting it out, I'll come up with specific language, but basically the
But essentially it'd be on the approval of the council as a whole?
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Buxton. Oh, do I have a second?
For discussion purposes, I'll second.
Okay, go ahead. Deputy Mayor Buxton, you have the floor.
I think this is rather benign. I'm fine with that amendment.
Yeah.
Upon approval of the council. So you could just bring it up during your council member comments. Hey, John Jones from Mount Rainier High School wanted a letter from me. Is that all right with you guys? So I'm fine.
Councilmember Harris.
Again, I am concerned about the ongoing, I've been watching this since 2008 and every one of these rules rewrites gives more and more authority to the mayor. And we drift away from the idea of seven equals. And this is one of those little things where if the mayor can at will just put out a piece of letterhead with the city logo on it, it, again, it's one of those small things. It seems small, but it sets the mayor apart. And since the rest of the council can't know what, you know, is on that letterhead, you know, anytime you do anything where it creates the impression that you're speaking for the city, it should be subject to the assent of the body.
Okay, City Manager Mathias.
Yeah, just a logistical issue with this. What if there's not a meeting for a month and we need a letter for some purpose?
Well, you run the city. I mean, what, seriously, what circumstances would require an immediate response like that?
Oh, a lot.
If this is a ceremonial purpose.
Well, grant applications, legislative proceedings, relationships with other agencies, support for things that are within the dynamic of the council legislative agenda. I mean, there's multiple, multiple times that something there's multiple, multiple times that something is needed, like, quickly, and that doesn't always coincide with council meetings, so-
This is a letter of recommendation.
This is just for students.
This is not argumentative, sir, it's just a logistical challenge if you pass this, that's all.
Okay, well, then I'll go with more specific language.
Mr. Harris, just a second. Just, just because this is, because it's solely for letters of recommendation for students or others seeking employment or appointment, I have no issue either with making sure that the approval of the council is met in that regard. So, I'm fine with the amendment. Councilmember Pennington.
I guess, at, when it, when it talks about specifically about letters of recommendation for students or others seeking employment or appointment, is, is that a, a function of the council to, to do that? I mean, and, and what I'm asking is, if somebody comes to you as an individual council member, you know, because they know you, and can you write me a letter of recommendation to, to go to this college or to, or do whatever, I mean, you could write it on your own personal letterhead, you know, I, I'm a member of, of a local city council and I highly recommend this person for X.
Yeah, well, this would be-
That's on your personal stuff, and, and, and I, you know, unless the council as a whole is going to do official council business to, to make a, a, a recommendation for, for, you know, and specifically this says, you know, employment or appointments, unless we do, and if we, if we decide to do that as a council as a whole, great, it goes on letterhead, but I think if somebody comes to you individually and asks you, you know, to do that individually, you're not, you can't represent the city, because you don't have that authorization, right? And so, do it on your own personal letterhead, let them know you're a council member, you know, in a, in a local city, and, and, and that's that.
Yeah, let's, let's just scratch the whole thing together. I make the amendment, we just scratch, scratch it, because that's the way we would handle it.
I'd say that.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, five oh three H is scratched. Okay.
You know, um, oh, okay, and one, one last thing regarding five oh seven A.
Five oh seven A.
If council member receives communication from a member of the community conveying a concern, complaint, or administrative issue, the council member should not attempt to address it or resolve it individually. The individual council member may request to be informed of the action or response to that complaint. You know, that's been a challenge. I, many residents have included me in that chain, and I have not received the response, so this is more of a question of getting us to do something that is already in the rules of procedure. So what I would like to do is, in that last sentence, the individual council member may request to be informed of the action and CC'd on all subsequent communications on the topic.
I don't necessarily think that needs to be the change. I mean, the biggest problem here has been receiving communications. I've received a lot of complaints from a lot of people, comments, but nothing forwarded to the city to prevent. I don't think, I think the language, if you request that you be informed of the action or response made to the complaint, that's good enough language to get you through.
Yeah, but it's not happening.
Well, we can address that when the council rules are approved.
Oh, good.
All right. So no amendment made there. All right, moving down the line.
Well, that's, that's it for, that's it for chapter five.
Is, just, any, anybody else have anything for chapter five?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing none, we have fifteen more minutes or fourteen more minutes, so chapter This was pretty standard language from before. All right, seeing none. Moving on to chapter seven. Councilmember Harris.
Seven oh two, one of the non-trivial changes we seem to have removed, the mid-year performance review of the city manager.
That, that will be, that is in there, and-
The mid-year?
Yes, and you guys will be getting notification on that after next week's meeting. That'll occur in June, on June twenty-second.
As I understand it, that's in the DMMC-
Yes.
Two point oh four, point oh five oh, and why it's referenced right in this rule, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, it used to-
It, due to COVID and some other situations, it, it did not occur, but it, it will occur going forward.
Wow.
All right.
Great, so, seven point oh four.
Okay.
There should be, and I don't know how to, but the city council, this is like the HR, there should, this is one case where the council, a council member should be able to ask a question of the city attorney without being mediated by the city manager, so long as that email chain is transmitted to the full body. And, yeah, there, there needs to be some form of-
There's a, there's-
Some mechanism where a, a council member can ask a question of the city attorney.
You're, you're talking about attorney-client privilege.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about attorney-client privilege, I'm just talking about being able to ask a question of the city attorney directly that pertains to the business of the council.
City Manager Mathias.
Councilmember, I think that, you know, the quantitative, the qualitative, I'm still trying to figure out why Newton's Second Law would apply to anything in this conversation, but the concern is that you've sent over three thousand emails over the past number of years requesting information. So I think that having some type of filter in place has to appropriate, this is, is called for.
I'm going to add that, that in specific situations where there's city, city attorney-client privilege, that you have isolated issue where you contact him, I can see that, but everyday course of business, absolutely not, because it's an overused, we have somebody who's working and doing the work of the city, and it should be specific. Councilmember Steenmetz.
Yeah, really, I, I, I don't think there is any situation where a council member should have an individual attorney-client privilege with the city attorney. The city attorney is giving advice to the whole, and if there's a question to the city attorney, it should be relayed to the council as a whole, and for the reasons that the city manager just stated, I think we need to have some filter on that. But no, I, I would not support any change in allowing an individual council member to ask specific legal questions of the city attorney.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is also not just about this particular situation, it's about everybody in the future, five years from now. This, this wording came from a different city who feels the same way about this, it's, this is standard practice for how council members interact with their city attorneys. If you, my experience is, if you would like a certain freedom to discuss a certain subject back and forth, and you ask the city manager for permission to do that, I mean, that's what has happened to me, I mean, I didn't abuse the privilege, but while creating this document, that was, that permission was given to me. So you can obtain that freedom, subject by subject, but just to give a blank check to council members to just contact the city attorney at will, I don't think that's a good protection for the system that you've got and your overall administrative, the rule about working through the city manager.
So let's, let's, so you're, the, let's go ahead and get your motion first, Councilmember Harris.
Can I just make a quick point here?
Okay.
I think this also relates to the rules of professional responsibility for attorneys. These aren't, these, this piece right here isn't really a council rule, this is, this is the rules about who I represent as a client, that's not something that Councilmember Harris can change, he's not my client. He is, as a council, you are my client, Michael's my boss, as the CEO of the corporation, so there, there's really not an option as far as the way that I represent the council as a body for me to be representing you individually. So I think the, the way that this is written is not unique to the city of Des Moines, this is, this is the way that attorneys represent municipal organizations and even other corporations all across the state and all across the country, so there's nothing unique in this.
So do you still want to make a motion?
Yeah, you know, I feel like there needs to be a little fact check.
Yeah, Councilmember Harris, if, we'll continue this discussion, if you want to make a motion, you get a second.
Uh, what, as I said, there should be an opportunity for council members to ask non-privileged questions directly of the city attorney, so long as they are CC'd to the rest of the council.
Okay, do I have a second? Councilmember Oxger, a second. Any further discussion before I take a vote? Councilmember Pennington.
I just had a, a statement about that. You know, you have the opportunity to talk to the city attorney at a council meeting or during your committee assignments, so that's when you have the opportunity.
Or through the city manager.
Or through the city manager.
All right, Councilmember Harris, your last time.
Well, what if you have a question, this sort of goes back to, you know, the, the interim between meetings, but, you know, as to the three thousand thing, yeah, the total number of emails that, you know, and replies from staff and so on, if you are lucky enough to be on the council, you also will get into several thousands, there is nothing untoward about the quantity of emails that have gone back and forth, you're going to get four or five, you know, as part of just every meeting, multiply it by, you know, fifty-two weeks.
So, so, yeah, we're, let's stick to the subject, please.
Well, anyway, no, that's, that's, basically, there are going to be times where you're going to want to ask a question of the city attorney, that it's not a big secret or anything, but you want to be able to get his, just a piece of information, and it may not be something that the city manager is, you know, wants you to know about, okay, but that's not any kind of privileged thing, it's just that there is a different communication. And if you look at the org chart of other cities, all cities do not run the same. This relationship that I'm describing is not unusual, so.
All right, let's, let's take a vote. With council assignments, one last time before we-
Yeah, and I just want to make the point that part of the purpose of these rules is to clearly define those relationships, and that's why this section is in here, and I think it does, and it is an appropriate way to handle that relationship.
All right. So, so the, the motion is, Councilmember Penning-
I was just asking you to repeat that, what the motion was.
So, the way I understand it is that basically Councilmember Harris is asking that he, that all of us have special ability to contact the city attorney directly, but we would CC the rest of the council in that conversation.
Yes.
Added to this language.
Yes.
And that is the vote. So all those in favor of that amendment, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, I see Councilmember Oxger, all those opposed, I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steenmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. The motion fails two five. All right, we got five minutes left.
So, couple more, but this is the place where, where we talk about-
What section?
So what section and chapter?
Seven point oh five.
Okay.
Every council member is entitled to a timely response to their requests for information, also known as research. If the request is deemed to require more than an hour of staff time, the city manager will inform the council member and the request will be referred to the full council for a vote, as to whether or not to proceed.
This is your amendment?
I can't find that, is that in there, or you're asking us to insert that?
I'm asking, that's new language, that I, that I want-
This is your new language, all right. Do I have a second?
I need to hear it again.
Yeah, read it one more time.
Sure.
I didn't know you were doing a motion.
Okay, well, that's why it's a discussion. So, every council member is entitled to a timely response to their request for information around research from the administration. If the request is deemed to require more than one hour of staff time, the city manager will inform the full council to bring it to a vote as to whether or not to proceed with the research.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Oxger, a second in the motion, discussion. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, there needs to be a guarantee of research time. We can argue or discuss the amount, but this is why, you know, from day one, I have proposed what is called a council member information request. I didn't invent it, it's very common in other cities, and what it is, is basically every question you ask that gets answered and researched goes into a database, which future council members can refer to, because we're all asking the same darn questions over and over, year in and year out, and it would be a wonderful gift to future councils, but that's not what I'm asking for, I'm just basically getting a guarantee of research time.
All right, that's what you're, we've, we've got your motion. Anybody else in discussion before I take a vote?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Oxger.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important that if, take for example tonight, voting on the twenty-six million dollar bond issue, that if questions were, you know, asked, you know, of the city manager regarding, you know, pertinent information that could help the council make a decision, that, that should be forthcoming.
And I call it paralysis by analysis. Does anybody have other, other discussion before we take a vote on it? Councilmember Pennington.
You know, a, a lot of other cities and, and county councils and, and that, they, the individual council members have staff, you know, we don't, you know, we, we're tasked, that's part of what we volunteered to do. We get information, a certain amount of information from, from our city manager or, or the city clerk, and, and some of that information, you have to research yourself, that's just, that's part of it, and, you know, we don't have enough staff depth to go into the level of, I'm sure, research that, that folks would like. So, again, part of, of what you've taken on as individual council members is to, to do your own research.
Okay, we have to take a vote, because this is the last one before we go, so all those in favor of his motion.
I want to ask that question.
We're past the time, so you can, you can reintroduce it, we'll, we'll, we'll tackle this when we get back at the next meeting, let's just do that.
Yeah.
We'll continue on with that. We, we, we made a hard and fast rule that we would end at nine twenty-five, and we're at nine twenty-five. All right, with that being said, we will continue on with Rule seven oh five and the discussion, we come together. Our next meeting, regular council meeting, will be June eighth, and the, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Do I have a second? I have second by council, or motion by Councilmember Pennington, second by Councilmember Steenmetz, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero, we are adjourned.